Right, good evening everybody and welcome to this meeting of the Local Plan Committee. I'm the Chair, councillor Tim Young. The meeting is being livestreamed and will be available to view after the meeting on the council's YouTube channel. You're very welcome. To begin, there are a few matters of housekeeping. Action in the event of an emergency, there are no practice alarms planned for this evening, so if an alarm sounds, please evacuate Charter Hall by going back through the main entrance or via the fire exit doors to my right and then meeting at the skate park. There are also fire exit doors behind the stage to the right and left and councillors and officers on the committee will go to the outside gym. Do not re-enter the building until you are told it is safe to do so by a member of the Charter Hall team or member of the Democratic Services team. We will have a short break at 7.30pm. Please, would speakers use microphones at all times and speak directly into the microphone? And would participants please mute the microphones when not speaking, please? Introductions, I'm going to ask each member and officer to introduce themselves, starting with the Deputy Chair.
Councillor Spindler, Shrubham Ward.
Basemalls, councillor for Old Heath, The Hive and Roche.
Alakiakiyo, Murgreenstead Ward.
Councillor Kelly, Withanoe.
Councillor Vanessa Moffat, Mile End Ward.
Councillor Kirkby Taylor, Castle Ward.
Councillor Reece Smithson, Tiptree Ward.
Councillor Andrew Ellis, Markstain Layer Ward.
Lewis Barber, Lexington Braeswick Ward.
Councillor Martin Parsons, Mersey and Piflett Ward.
Thank you, and officers, starting with Rob.
Robert Carmichael, Democratic Services Officer.
Karen Syrah, Joint Head of Planning.
Sandra Scott, Ploughs Strategy Manager.
Shelley Blackaby, Principal Planning Policy Officer.
Rachel Forkin, Principal Planning Policy Officer.
All the officers at the back introducing, they haven't got microphones, so they can't. Okay, that's the main officers and everybody. Substitutions, are there any, Rob? There are no substitutions, you've got the first team out tonight. Urgent items, there are none. Declarations of interest, have any of the members of the committee got any declarations of interest? You can always speak up if it comes up, so thank you. Item five is minutes of the last meeting, the minutes of the meeting held on the 16th of December before the committee for confirmation. And I think, Rob, you've got a requested change in the minutes from councillor Parsons?
That's correct, Chair. So at minute 318 on page 12, on paragraph six of that page, there is an amendment where it should read that members discussed the measuring of average income per household and how on West Mersey this was below the normal average due to more than one-third of the population being retired, which was twice the national average, and that's a correction from what was in the original minutes, and the minutes set before you, Chair, is corrected in that.
Thank you very much, Rob. So with that amendment, can we agree the minutes? All those in favour? Anyone against? Then that is, they're agreed. Thank you very much, and thank you councillor Parsons for noticing that amendment. Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is general have your say. In line with our have your say rules and procedures, we've got the maximum of 10 speakers tonight. When you come forward, you will have three minutes to speak, and then there will be a response if appropriate from officers, and then you get another minute after that. Visiting councillors, when it's your turn, you'll have five minutes to speak plus a further minute after a response. But you won't get your chance, visiting councillors, until after the have your say from the public and after the introduction from the officers to the item, I think, that's how we'll play it. Okay, so our first have your say speaker is Rick Andrew, please, from Withanhoe Town Council. Rick, you will have three minutes, as I said, and a bell will sound after two to say you've got a minute left, and then another bell at the end of the three minutes. The time will start when you begin speaking.
Good evening councillor, I'm a parish councillor and regular member of the planning committee for the parish. We agree with the aims of Colchester's spatial strategy, which states, quote, "Identify opportunities for brownfield land", yes to that, and also yes to locating growth close to existing centres, unquote, because there's more employment and more travel options, particularly non-car options. Yes, we need some growth in smaller settlements to keep the pubs open, etc., and yes, we need to balance growth against ecology, biodiversity and heritage, to which we would add green spaces for health and wellbeing, parks and sports and recreation, and also avoiding coalescence. Also, as you will be aware, I'm sure, the government has committed to decarbonisation and net zero, which won't be achieved by yet more car-dependent out-of-town housing nowhere near employment, colleges, shops and leisure facilities. But government policy is also to build on greyfield sites, for example, car parks and vacant sites before good quality farmland and before other greenfield sites, which should be the last resort. And yet, 100% of the sites developers have put forward for building in our area are on green fields. So firstly, we seek assurance that our local plan will not be developer-led. Outlying villages have very few derelict brownfield sites and vacant greyfield sites. Withanhoe, for example, only has two, an old goods shed in the station car park and old garage opposite the coal. Whereas, Hive has several brown and greyfield sites, car parks and vacant land, on both sides of the river, all within walking distance of the station and the town centre, which could be suitable for four-storey apartment blocks of good quality, affordable housing for first-time buyers, who should not have to live with mum and dad well into their 30s. They don't require gardens, they don't require two car spaces per household. Colchester has some too, for example Sheepen Road and Roman Road Car Park. So the big question is, has Colchester planning really identified all the brownfield sites and all the greyfield sites? And if so, can we please see the list? If not, we would have to question the assumption that Colchester, quotes, "cannot meet the new targets without building on greenfield sites". So also yes to intensification, we have more than enough space-hungry bungalows and houses with large gardens and multiple parking spaces. So in conclusion, we think it'd be wrong to arbitrarily allocate targets to each parish just on the basis of population. The Colchester local plan should not be developer-led, we should be more proactive in seeking out the most suitable sites. The priority should be building affordable, good quality apartments.
We've got a lot of speakers, so I'm going to have to keep you to your three minutes. You will get another minute after the officer has responded. So who's going to respond? Karen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Andrew. Just to point a clarity to start with, there's no such thing as a greyfield site. The new NPPF identifies grey belt, but it's only within the green belt, and there's none of that in Colchester. What we do have is brownfield sites, and you're right, we should look to prioritise development of those in the first instance, and we have done. You mentioned The Hive in particular, and I think just about every brownfield site in The Hive is allocated within the local plan, so we are following that presumption. And the other point I wanted to make was around brownfield land and the register, which identifies all sites. It is on the website, so it is available publicly, and anyone can suggest sites to us at any time, and if they meet the criteria, we will add them. Thank you.
Karen, Mr Andrew, you have another minute.
Thank you for the response. So there is a list of brownfield sites that we can see, okay. Are you aware what Stockport is doing? Stockport has focused very much on city centre living, rather than trying to regenerate the high street purely via retail, they're focusing on getting people living in the town centre. So that's my last question, really, just to reiterate that good quality apartments in near Colchester town centre, especially in Hive, where revitalisation is sorely needed, should be the priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Andrew. Are we aware of Stockport?
Not in particular, no.
We'll have a look, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
But I can assure Mr Andrew that the town centre or city centre is a priority for redevelopment.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Andrew. Our second have your say speaker is no stranger to these parts, Sir Bob Russell. Sir Bob, you know the score.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to refer to pages 29 and 341, but before that, I think it'd be remiss of me not to welcome the change on Middlewick, and I'd like to put on record my appreciation to the Friends of Middlewick and all who've been involved, and to thank the officers as well for the conclusion, which I hope will be taken forward, and I hope that every effort will be made to get the government to move at pace, which I think is the latest phrase we must use, for the Middlewick to come into the ownership, either of course the City Council or the Essex Wildlife Trust, or perhaps a combination of the two. Chairman, I'd like to refer on page 29 to three sites, Britannia Car Park, Britannia needs to be spelt correctly, by the way, Vineyard Gate, and land at Colchester Station. Land at Colchester Station, can we be given an assurance that all the land referred to in Colchester Station is to the north of the railway line, and none of it is to the south of the railway line on Simling Flood Meadows? The reason I say that is that land has recently been sold for about a million pounds. One assumes that people who bought it would wish to build houses on it rather than to graze cows, so I think that is something to be looked at. So far as Britannia Car Park and Vineyard Gate, there's 100 dwellings proposed on each site, and I'm going to ask again and make the comment I've made many, many times, that the vitality and the economic success of the city centre relies on car parks as one means, in fact, two-thirds of people come into the city centre by car. These two car parks per space are the largest income-revenue generator for Colchester City Council. They bring in roughly a million pounds a year, and if those two car parks go for housing, that is a million pounds a year revenue lost to the council, a council which says it is short of money and needs to generate money, and the city centre needs those car parks in order to be financially successful. So I know it's not going to happen tonight, but I do think that we need to take serious stock. I get the feeling that the council operates in silos, so those who are planning for houses, but are not talking to the people who are trying to regenerate the city centre.
Thank you, Sir Bob. Karen?
Thank you. I can assure Sir Bob that all redevelopment at the station is north of the railway line, and in terms of the city centre, please be assured that we do speak to people in the economic growth and regeneration teams, and we're working with Essex County Council as well, looking at those sites and others within the city centre. So we will look at all aspects of that. Thank you.
Sir Bob, you have another minute?
Very briefly, Chairman, I'm grateful for the answer, but the reality is, if you remove 200 car parking spaces which bring in a revenue of a million pounds a year, that has serious knock-on impact on the council's finances and on the economic vitality and sustainability of the city centre. The one thing that amazes me, that the city-centred traders and businesses seem to be relaxed and not doing much about it to fight their corner. It shouldn't be for me to come here to fight their corner.
Thank you, Sir Bob. Our next speaker is Denise Stocker from Waitscombe Parish Council. Denise, you'll have three minutes, a bell after two, and to tell you you've got a minute left, and then another bell after three, and then a minute after the response. So your time will start when you start speaking.
Hello, my name is Denise Stocker, and I'm a long-term resident and parish councillor from Waitscombe Parish. The proposed development of 200 houses in Waitscombe will have the effect of virtually doubling the current population to almost 1,000. While development can bring opportunities, it also raises concerns about infrastructure and the preservation of this village known for its beauty and the chapel viaduct. It is our duty to ensure that Waitscombe continues to be an attractive and safe place for future generations, and this means ensuring that development meets the needs of the people who live and who will live there. The proposed development will put additional strains on the village infrastructure. Local facilities, including the chapel primary school, which already cannot cope with the current demand for spaces, will be stretched. Residents already travel outside the village to visit overburdened GP surgeries and to secondary schooling and to other public facilities. We need to know how a 1124 and other roads will cope with the cumulative effect of development along its route. The list of proposed incentives is noted, including making station road an access-only road, and also the lower section of station road being made into an enhanced pedestrian route. Delivery of both of these will be essential to the residents of Waitscombe and likely to be very costly, so this raises the question of viability. Residents will need to be assured that stringent measures and constraints are tied into place which protects the delivery of such proposals and prevents them from melting away over time. The Waitshall Business Centre, the proposed extension for the existing business centre will further encroach on the land and rural character of the western side of the village. While pedestrian and cycleway connectivity between the two sites may be applauded, future infill development would not. This green space serves to separate Waitshall Business Centre from the village and would be suitable for inclusion as a local green buffer. Please, can you assure us that residents and the parish council will have this opportunity to influence both proposals at every stage, from inclusion into the plan policy through to construction? If we must have growth, we want to use it as a chance to reshape the village to the benefit of all of us, creating a sustainable, happy future for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Karen to respond, please?
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's some really good points made there, thank you very much, and particularly, I think, in relation to the consultation process and the ability to influence anything that goes in the plan, whether it's this site or any other site in the plan. This is a consultation, it's not the final plan, and it's definitely the opportunity to influence the policy requirements and also to help influence the evidence as it emerges as a result of the consultation, so thank you. Sandra, was there anything else you wanted to add specifically?
No, just to say that I think probably
No, just to say that I think probably almost all of the things that you did mention are already suggested as criteria for considerations in the policy, but as Karen said, any further suggestions or factors that it's thought that have been missed would be welcome through the consultation and you mentioned viability and further testing and viability evidence will be required for all the sites that are in the final, excuse me, the final plan that will follow at later date.
Thank you. You have another minute, Denise, if you wish to use it?
Thank you for that. I think that the point that was made about the viability and delivering on the promises is really important because only recently we've had a much smaller development of about twenty-two properties and the benefits that the community was due to enjoy as a result of that were not forthcoming and we lost out on that, so we are very, very keen to make sure that what the proposals that are being promised to us, particularly in Station Road, is they're followed through and the promises are kept. Thank you.
We've heard that loud and clear. Thank you very much, Denise. Our next speaker is Annette Butterworth from Welshwood Park Residents' Association. Your time will start, Annette, when you start speaking.
My comments concern the land in the draft plan with our ID 10606. The land proposed for development is farmland, agricultural land which is surrounded by native woodland on all sides with hedgerows containing mature trees lacing through the fields. The fields are bordered by Salery Brook which flows through to the River Colne. Food is grown in the fields, wheat, barley, maize. In a survey conducted by the UK Government in 2024, it was stated that food security needs to be at the heart of plans for growth and that the long-term decline of the UK's natural capital, i.e. farmland, is a pressing risk to UK food production. This farmland is precious and any thought of building on it should be dismissed from the point of view of food security alone. Welshwood is home to native trees and has been designated as a nature reserve. However, this whole area surrounding it is home to a wide variety of fauna and flora. Skylarks that are on the red list for birds of conservation concern and are endangered nest in the fields and can be seen and heard hovering over the area. Buzzards soar over the woods and fields. This area is biodiverse and is crucial to the existence of Welshwood itself and the other woodland and without the surrounding fields, Welshwood would become sterile. The woods cannot and should not be viewed in isolation to the fields surrounding them, both contributing to the ecological system providing vital green corridors. It is not only the wildlife of the area that would be affected if this development were to be allowed, the area is crossed by public footpaths and is walked extensively by local people and walkers from further afield. The whole area makes a very great contribution to the mental and physical wellbeing of a large part of the population of Colchester. This area is right on the edge of Colchester's jurisdiction, it is Colchester's backyard and if these green fields were to be built on, there would be no green space left between Tendring and the new garden community being built nearby. This area is a vital contributor to the decarbonisation of a very congested city of Colchester. These green spaces sequester carbon dioxide from the atmosphere that is increasingly being generated by the surrounding area. This area is the complete opposite of the government's stated preferred route for development, i.e. brownfield sites. Rather than allow this area to be buried under concrete forever, I would like to ask the council to create a green corridor linking through from Bullock Wood to Welshwood and on to the new Tendring-Colchester Borders Garden Community. If the council allows the development of this area, it will seem that any effort to meet the demands of the greatest risks we face, climate change, will have been ignored by them.
Thank you, Annette. Thank you very much. Well timed. Response, please. Who's going to... Sandra, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much again, some very useful points in there, sorry, referring to some of the characteristics of the site which if it were to go forward as an allocation would be very important to the way in which it was developed and master-planned. The policy which is drafted as PP9 has a number of criteria that pick up on all of those points in relation to the biodiversity nature, the Welshwood Park, the Wallswood and Salery Brook and the opportunity to both safeguard, enhance and also create the connectivity and the opportunity for green corridors. And also the allocation would be subject to master planning which would lead to the opportunity for all of those considerations to be taken further and considered to develop the site in the best way and safeguard those interests and includes provision for enhanced open space at a strategic level which again would link to some of those objectives.
Thank you, Sandra. Annette, you have another minute if you wish to use it?
Are you going to tell the skylarks that? Because when you start interfering with fields like that, they will just go and, you know, to just say, well, we're going to provide a few bits and pieces there. Walking through a housing estate is not the same as walking round fields, hearing skylarks, seeing buzzards flying and I don't feel that I'm just speaking for myself here, I'm talking for Colchester and it's not in Colchester's backyard here, nimbyism we've heard about, but you're affecting the whole of Colchester here because there are people from Greens did come to walk there and it's a precious area that without it, I don't know, you know, once we've got the garden community right on our doorstep as well, there won't be any gap between that and Colchester. And, you know, with infrastructure being so, so poor, I don't know where people will go, that's all.
Thank you, Annette. Heard loud and clear, our challenge of course is that we've got to find thirteen hundred houses a year for the next fifteen years and they've got to go somewhere, but we'll take your points on board. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Rosie Pearson, please. Rosie?
Good evening and thank you for having me. Haven't been to one of these for a while. So I was involved with the Roman River Corridor submitted by two or three villages and I'd like to thank the officers for giving that consideration and for including it in the plan. It's great when communities are listened to, so thank you for that. And in relation to that, I'd like to talk about the site north of the A120 in West Tay and to ask if it's possible to ring-fence the north of that site from the Roman River up to the Gainsborough Line to keep that as a nature part of the site because it's all interlinked and I can talk to you in more detail, but that's the Roman River Corridor. Also in relation to that site, I'd like to talk about infrastructure first, which has been a theme of ours through calls in the past. It's admitted in the agenda pack that the A120, the A12 are a problem, everyone knows they're a problem. I think we have to be realistic that there's no chance of the A120 coming forward in the planned period and highly unlikely with A12 not being funded at the moment that that will come forward, therefore we need to work out how that is addressed in the plan. In the West Country, in either Stroud or Strewd, never sure how it's pronounced, but their local plan has just been thrown out on the basis of issues with the roads that were not addressed properly through the plan, so I think we have to accept there's a problem there and I am asking tonight whether Colchester will be able to take a more robust stance on public transport, active transport and walking and maybe prioritise funding for that from developers so we actually get some proper long-term ring-fence funding for public transport. And one part solution to some of the problems raised by other people tonight is to increase the density on sites. That doesn't mean lots of houses crammed in together, it doesn't mean tower blocks. There's a great project done by Create Streets which I'm sure all officers are aware of, which found you could reduce the land take by master planning in a clever way. That also means you can support public transport, it makes the site more walkable, it allows cycling, so you get less of our valuable green spaces taken up. So one of my points is would you be willing to meet with Create Streets and talk to them? And I've approached them and they are willing to talk to you. And yeah, so density examples, you can do some really great high-density sites. I went to one in Germany, a very famous one outside Freiburg and it doesn't feel high-density, you've got more green space than you see in any of the housing estates around Colchester, so density isn't a bad word. So to sum up, firstly, will you be able to ring-fence the north of the site of the West Tay allocation as part of the Roman River Corridor? Secondly, will you be able to meet with Create Streets or have you already? And thirdly, will you take an infrastructure-first approach to this local plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. I think I can answer one point which I think it's Stroud.
Thank you.
Karen or Sandra?
I can confirm that the Lomond River Corridor will be protected and it is intended that the development will take place on the southern parts of that site, but details aren't available at this stage of the plan. Walking, cycling, public transport are also identified within the plan in other policies to be prioritised and we do have an active environments officer who's here today who will meet and has met all the relevant parties and to promote that way. Infrastructure first, it's not always appropriate for infrastructure first, there's no point in building things if there's not enough people to use them, so the infrastructure will come at the appropriate time.
You have another minute, Rosie?
Thank you. I think on the infrastructure first, probably every resident of Colchester would disagree, we've already got an issue with the infrastructure, it needs to be resolved before the houses go in, we're constantly on catch-up and we need a robust infrastructure delivery plan that doesn't just set out a list of projects that are needed, but how they're going to be funded and get that funded in advance. We can't have delayed infrastructure. But thank you for the point.
Thank you, Rosie. I think we're going to hear a lot about infrastructure tonight, so points are well made. Next speaker, Richard Martin, please. Richard, you're no stranger to these meetings either, so look forward to hearing what you have to say tonight.
All right, thank you for your time tonight this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of Friends of Middlewick, Bug Live, Essex Wildlife Trust, Colchester Networks, Essex Field Club and the seventeen thousand six hundred people who signed our petition. Firstly, I want to thank Colchester City Council for listening to the overwhelming evidence provided by both their and our ecologists, conservation experts and statutory consultees. The Middlewick Rangers from the local plan, it's not just the right decision, it's the only defensible one. The council's own Strategic Biodiversity Assessment, SBA, and commissioned ecological reports confirm beyond doubt that Middlewick Rangers is an irreplaceable local wildlife site supporting multiple priority habitats under Section 41 of the Natural Environment and Rural Communities Act 2006. The MPPF, as updated in December 2024, clearly mandates that all Section 41 priority habitats should always be protected from harm, a requirement this council is now rightly following. Middlewick contains over thirty hectares of rare acid grassland, the largest intact example in Essex outside Epping Forest, triple SI, as well as a nationally important wax cat grassland, breeding nightingales, barbasil bats and exceptional invertebrate assemblage. The SBA confirms that the local wildlife sites like Middlewick are expected to be protected through the planning system, reinforcing the council's decision to remove the site from allocation. There is simple, no legal ecological justification for development here. It has been suggested that Middlewick's removal from the local plan has caused other sites to be allocated development. This is misleading and incorrect. The reality is that Middlewick's inclusion was never legally or environmentally viable. Had it remained, we are confident that the entire local plan would have been found unsound at examination, causing even greater delays and uncertainty. The mitigation hierarchy must be applied and in the case of irreplaceable habitats, that means avoidance is only legally, is the only legally and ecological acceptable outcome. The council planners are right to follow the national policy and their own commissioned evidence in recommending Middlewick's removal. However, while Middlewick now is safe from development, the future remains uncertain. The site has suffered from years of neglect due to presumed development and urgent conservation management is needed to restore and enhance its nationally significant habitats. The council's own ecologists have highlighted this, so my question to the committee is this: now that Middlewick has been rightly recognised for its ecological importance, what steps will the council take to ensure it's safeguarded for the future? Middlewick Rangers is not just a local wildlife site, it's the beating heart of Colchester's green network connecting directly to Friday Woods and the Roman River, triple SI. Its protection strengthens the local plan, aligns it with thirty by thirty national conservation targets and supports the council's own green network and waterways guiding.
Thank you, Richard. Sandra?
Thank you. I'm going to lose my voice. Thank you very much. Firstly, just a reminder that this process doesn't actually remove the site from the adopted local plan, but it recommends it is not taken forward as an allocation in the local plan review. In terms of safeguarding it for the future, in respect of the local plan, the local plan seeks to do that by providing policy protection through recommending part of it as local green space and wider area as a strategic biodiversity opportunity area. You're absolutely right that proper management is required long-term and a collaborative approach by a number of parties to successfully achieve that, including the interested parties, Natural England and the council. Excuse me, sorry. However, I'd suggest that that goes beyond the remit of local plan committee other than the policies that I've referred to. And then just on the final point around a national nature reserve, that's, it's not for the council to designate, that's something that would need to be done by Natural England. I think that covers all the points, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Do you have another minute?
Thank you very much. I believe, I know, I know the National Nature Reserve is down to Natural England, but I believe it is down to the councils authority who can put it from a local green space and a local wildlife site up to a national reserve, sorry, to a nature reserve.
Yep, well, I think there's a lot of councillors here, we've all heard what you've said, we thank you for all the evidence that you provided us with and I think Middlewick should now be safe from development and, but it is down to us with your help to lobby Natural England and the other agencies to make sure that we get what we want at Middlewick. Thank you, Richard. The next speaker is David Cooper from West Mersey Town Council. Your time will start, David, when you start speaking.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. West Mersey Town Council expressed grave concern at the allocation of a further three hundred dwellings on the island, over and above the already allocated two hundred under the present local plan, together with moving of the settlement boundary to include a further sixteen hectares of mainly farmland. The local requirement for housing on the island is in doubt as the census data for 2011 to 2021 showed an increase of only thirty-seven persons whilst there were some hundred new dwellings built during the same period. This would tend to indicate yet more second or holiday homes on the island. Also, our sixty-plus population increased from thirty-nine point nine percent to forty-four point three over this period, more than twice the sixty-plus ratio of Colchester and the national average. The extra five hundred dwellings will mean that there will be more than a thousand extra cars on the island, adding to the seven and a half plus thousand vehicles movements a day on and off the island. Further increasing the vehicle numbers is the intensification of static caravans of nearly two thousand units, plus eight thousand touring sites and holiday lets. Concern of poor infrastructure on the island leads us vulnerable to an increase in dwellings, not least the fact that the island's doctors have had to close their list to new patients with foreseeable future. We still await further assessments on the effects of climate change on the increasing pace of sea level rise and how this directly impacts on the road access onto the island. This year, there are two hundred and twenty days when the high tide is predicted to come onto the road. The effect of the Causeway Road being closed by the sea is far worse than the present chaos at the height of the pandemic. at the Hys. Water depth of some two metres at times, which results in two hours of hold-up, with tailbacks of four to five kilometres on the main and side. This does also create issues for the emergency service and access to hospital and medical appointments off the island. The public transport, which runs approximately every hour to Colchester, is always interrupted and during the midday period predicted high tides, there can be no public transport for four hours. Further climate change has not been considered regarding the general sea level rise and the existing seawall defences, which were increased in 1953 floods to the height of that tide. This was then considered a one-in-a-hundred-year event. However, since then, the annual rate of sea level rise has increased significantly. Any breach of the seawall on the mainland side of Stroud will allow it to flood the low-lying area through the B1025 Axis Road. As in 1953, this was impassable for many days. All this indicates that Mersey Island is an unsuitable location for yet more housing.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Sandra?
Okay, I'll start and Karen may have some more to add. I'll just pick up on the last points around climate change and flooding and just reassure you that the methodology and approach for strategic flood risk assessment, which is a key part of the evidence base for the local plan, does include consideration for the impacts of climate change and it obviously follows a standard, the methodology as required for all flood risk and it, so I don't think it's correct to say that it hasn't been considered because I think the evidence and the strategic flood risk assessment has fully considered that. I don't, have you got?
Karen?
Yeah, I've just got a point really in relation to the number of new dwellings that have been built and not really matching the increase in population, despite there being an increase in the over 60s on Mersey. I think those points taken together demonstrate really why we need more housing, because more generally, we've got an aging population and this contributes to more people living on their own, which generates the need for more housing in its own right. And on Mersey, you've got the perfect storm, I suppose, in terms of having an older population more generally and therefore more people living on their own. So I suspect that's why the population itself has increased only by 37 in that period.
Thanks, Karen. Mr. Cooper, you have another minute?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You say climate change has been considered. I don't see it being considered in sea level rise and roadways. It does in flooding of properties, but not access. That is one missing point in your section and I would like that to be looked at and commented on by those in charge. Coming to Karen Syrah's point about the old age people, yeah, we are, but there's still a lot of couples on the island, but the main increase, as we found at the 2011 census, that we had 251 properties that were unoccupied by being second homes. It's at a very high proportion on the island and it's just continuing. The property is now being sold, quite often are people moving on there, they don't move in, it's an early retirement home that they've booked their place on Mersey to come in later. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Our next speaker is Alister Hunter from Langham Parish Council. Before you start, Mr. Hunter, can I thank all those residents of Langham who have emailed me over the last few days? Thank you for your interest and they're all very similar, but making very good points. Mr. Hunter, you have three minutes and the time will start when you start speaking.
Good evening. My name's Alister Hunter, I'm a resident of Langham and a local councillor. I don't wish to sit here and be negative about any house building. There is clearly a need for affordable, well-built homes to be built in the correct areas with the required facilities. However, building 900 homes in Langham is not the answer to your prayers. Langham currently has 300 homes at its core of the village, so this would dramatically increase the size of the village and in fact, building these homes would deem the village a small town. So let's talk reality. 900 homes equals circa 2,700 people, about 2,000 vehicles and 1,000 school places. The proposed land is basically accessible via a country lane, used by locals and many farm vehicles. There is a lack of public transport, poor footpaths and poor cycle path connectivity. No additional school places in the immediate area, no doctor's practices that have spaces for additional residents and more importantly, there is an ongoing issue with Anglia Water, who themselves agree that there is not the capacity within the system to cope with the agreed planning approvals, let alone 900 more, with no plans in place to upgrade this system. Can I ask everybody to refer to the Langham Parish Council's submission paper that was sent on Thursday, which I hope you've had the chance to read? If you read this submission, it clearly states what is required to build 900 homes and why this area is not suitable. These issues are not excuses not to build, they are the realities of the situation. 900 homes in Langham would particularly fail to meet two of Colchester City Council's four key strategic items: well-connected and being sustainable. The infrastructure is not in place and unless the council, Anglia Water and the building company are willing to spend many millions of pounds, it will not be there and in fact, if this was built, it would make the investment unviable, unattractive to any third party. I wonder where on earth the money for serious road improvements could have come from, given that there has been no funding even to repair the two bridges over the A12 connected Langham to Colchester, Selvridge Lane and Birchwood Road, five years and two years respectively. As I said at the start, I don't wish to be negative, but anybody looking at this from...
Thirty-three minutes, yeah. You will have another minute, Mr. Hunter. Who's going to respond? Sandra?
So the, sorry. First of all, just to say that the approach to the 900 houses at Langham is part of an overall strategy and looking at the opportunities that are called with that strategy. And it identifies, starting with looking at the opportunities for growth in the city centre, then brownfield sites, the urban edge of Colchester, and then identifying opportunities for growth along potential transport corridors. And Langham has the potential for all of the opportunity, the issues that you identified as being lacking, development at this scale would provide the opportunity for all of those infrastructure shortfalls to be delivered as part of a development at this scale. And the policy identifies that through a master planning approach and it would not be acceptable if that wasn't to be supported by that, those kind of improvements and those kind of benefits. Just turning to water itself, I think it's recognised that the problems that are associated with the capacity at Langham Water Recycling Centre at the moment and both the infrastructure audit, delivery plan, stage three report and the water cycle study recognise that. I think the way in which the, those evidence pieces are, respond to the baseline evidence that is, reflects the Anglia Water's position at the moment and the way in which the cycles of funding and the review of that investment planning works allows for the baseline to reflect what's proposed for growth in this plan, giving the opportunity for the longer term for investment opportunities to be provided to resolve the issues that currently exist at the Water Recycling Centre in, to support the growth that is proposed in this plan.
Thanks, Sandra. Alister, you have another minute?
I've got to say, that's complete and utter nonsense.
If you applaud, he loses some of his minutes, so Karen.
You really haven't answered the questions. So Anglia Water have reviewed the situation down there and they're not planning to do anything, unless I'm wrong, and I'm sure somebody will tell me around here, that it won't be done until 2050. And at the moment, they can't build the 80 homes that you guys have already agreed planning permission for because of the said reason. You know, I'm astonished, once again.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hunter. We have another speaker from Langham Parish Council, Paul Armstrong. Paul, your time will start when you start speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Armstrong here, also from Langham Parish Council. So Alister has already spoken about the total unsuitability of Langham for 900 new homes and as some of your inboxes will know, just over 300 Langham residents have actually emailed us their concerns, many of them copied to you over the last four and a half days since we briefed them at a parish council meeting. So I share all their concerns, but what I want to focus on here are the procedural aspects of the current difficult situation faced by Colchester City Council. So Midwick has just been dropped from the local plan and I do congratulate Save the Wick for their hard-won success. It does however leave the city council with a very sizeable hole in their plan, roughly Langham-sized, I would suggest. When you ditch nearly 10% of all the homes in your draft plan, it seems right to me that you should undertake a full re-evaluation of all potential sites before coming up with a fresh plan and I wonder whether this has truly happened. So I've got four very simple questions for the committee and I really hope that you can answer them here tonight, but if you can't, then please can you answer them in writing to the parish council as soon as possible after this meeting? So firstly, how many sites have received supplementary housing allocations as a result of removing Midwick from the plan? Secondly, how many houses were proposed for Langham prior to removing Midwick from the plan? Thirdly, did officers undertake a full re-evaluation of all sites from the call for sites and desktop study before publishing the new plan without Midwick? And finally, during the re-evaluation for Langham, what updates were there to the evidence base or the sustainability appraisal to support an increase in the housing allocation? Later this evening, Carol will, I feel sure, warn you in stern terms about the dire consequences of any slippage in the adoption timetable. But there are risks too in adopting a seriously flawed plan today, if it then ends up needing a major rework further down the line. I suspect these risks might actually be bigger, but that's a judgement you'll have to take tonight. And finally, I have some late-breaking news. I want to highlight just one of the 300 objection emails that we've received over the last few days. It was also sent to Sandra Scott and the committee chairman early this afternoon. It's come from two chartered town planners and it advises Sandra that the Langham 900 allocation will fail all three soundness tests in the MPPF. I do hope that the content of that email has been or will be shared with the committee before you vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Who's going to respond? Karen?
Thank you. I want to reassure Mr. Armstrong and the committee that the removal of Midwick is based purely on evidence. It wasn't taken at a point in time which required us to add on a few here and there to existing sites. The thousands of houses that were allocated there at Midwick haven't been redistributed to other sites. The plan is looked at as a whole and every site is looked at on its own merits. All the allocations are based on evidence and an assessment of site-specific constraints and indeed opportunities, so there's been no re-evaluation of any evidence to suit the outputs. So there's been no re-evaluation, no numbers added to any sites, whether it be Langham or elsewhere in the plan. And the evidence base has been developed alongside the plan. Parts of it are required in accordance with guidance and policy to be undertaken iteratively alongside the development of the plan, including the sustainability appraisal that you specifically mentioned. So that has all taken place procedurally-wise, it's all been undertaken correctly. In terms of the breaking news, I haven't seen the email myself, so I can't comment, but at this stage, and Sandra's just said she hasn't received it either, but at this stage in the process, we're not looking specifically at the tests of soundness. This is a draft plan and what we're suggesting is that it's published for consultation, so that evidence base can continue to evolve and that's what will take place. We'll certainly consider the email when it's forwarded to us in light of everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Armstrong, you have another minute. If you tell me the name of the person, I might be able to see if I got it.
Okay, I have a copy of the email here, it's from, well, I don't know if I should give the name, but I can see the two lists, it's to Sandra Scott, copied to Planning Services, Tim Young, Councillor Lewis Barber, Thomas Rowe. And I really do think you should, if you haven't read it, read it before voting tonight. I'll just make one other point to Karen, so I'm glad to hear there's not been a re-evaluation and it's all based on the evidence base and all the thousands of pages that I've been trying to read through over the last few days. Perhaps you haven't read yourself within the latest stage three infrastructure audit and delivery plan, which was put up on the website just a few days ago. It mentions housing allocations there and the numbers for Langham in that are 286. So I think that, I'm afraid I, well, I can't put two and two together on that, but 286 is what's in your own evidence document.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Okay, our final public speaker is Bob Suckling from Messing-Cumminworth Parish Council. Bob, you have three minutes and it will start when you start speaking.
Good evening. Bearing in mind the national picture and the decisions of central government on building, we'd be being unrealistic to expect Messing-Cumminworth to be unaffected by proposals in the local plan. We had expected that the village would need to make its contribution towards the area's future building requirements, but we have major concerns with both the scale and the location of the proposals included in the draft local plan. We'll be putting these concerns forward vigorously in the consultation phase if the draft is approved tonight, but just as an indication of our concerns, there are currently about 140 dwellings and 300 residents in Messing. The draft local plan will increase the number of dwellings by almost 20% and the number of residents by more than this. These numbers are excessive and unacceptable. You can tell we're talking about a very small settlement here. Messing's very badly served by public transport. We have two buses, both on a Friday. We have very few services, no shops, no medical services. Vast majority of travel options are actually either car or pedestrian, and there's very difficult vehicle access and dangerous pedestrian access via very narrow country lanes. We're really talking about narrow roads here with passing places in many instances. Not good for pedestrians. The draft local plan stipulates the creation of another area of public home space attached to the proposed 25-dwelling development. In what is, as I've said, a very small village, we already have a children's playground, a village green, and a community orchard. Considering the rural nature of the village and the number of houses that contribute towards the precept, this is an ill-thought-out requirement. The village doesn't require it and could not afford to manage it. From a local perspective, this smacks of template planning, simply applying a standard formula with no knowledge of thought or local needs and practicalities. Bearing in mind the history of the local sewage system, we have strong reservations on the ability of the current installation to cope with a proposed population increase, and indeed, we've had a fleet of tankers going through the village only today, shipping waste around. The proposed site was included in the Messing flood study in 2014. Significant measures were put in place by Essex County Council, and while the site itself is unlikely to flood, we strongly suspect that the potential for disturbing these measures has not been taken into account in the production of the draft local plan. To summarise, Messing-Cummins does not reject the concept of citing additional dwellings as part of the revised local plan. However, we reject the plan as it currently stands for the parish and stand ready to work with the planning team.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Bob. Karen.
Thank you. I'm heartened by your final statement, so we'll certainly look to work positively with you as well. The proposal is for 25 additional dwellings in Messing, so it's quite small-scale, I know in comparison to some of the sites that we've heard about tonight, but I do appreciate what you're saying about the services and facilities in Messing itself, so certainly something that we will look into during the consultation and happy to meet with the parish council. Thank you.
Have another minute, Bob, if you want to use it.
Yeah, I appreciate 25 is small numbers when we've been looking at some of the numbers this evening, but actually, in proportion, it's a lot. And the key aspect is communications into and out of the village. We're talking pedestrian access or cars. No buses to speak of, as I say, two small buses on a Friday, and that's it. So, any new resident, really, they're going to be using cars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. That completes the have-your-say speakers. I have actually changed my mind. Before you give your presentation, I'm going to start going through the list of visiting councillors. We won't get through all of you before the break, but I'll do them in the order that they've been given to me. So, we're moving on to item seven, that's after the have-your-say, and I'm going to invite visiting councillors to make their points, and that will give the officers the opportunity to respond to the points that you make as well. As I said earlier, you've got five, up to five minutes, and then another minute after the response. The first speaker is the portfolio holder, councillor Andrea Luxford Vaughan. Your five minutes will start, Andrea, when you start speaking.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to officers. Obviously, this huge amount of work has gone into getting the papers prepared for today, and behind that enormous whopping 800-plus agenda, there's, as I discover every day, an evidence base that's even larger. That really starts where my concerns start, which is that this committee, all of us, have had very limited time to get through such a huge body of work, and yet you're being asked to make a decision tonight based on that. There's three things in particular that I have concerns about, not fundamentally, but I think we're possibly being a little bit premature trying to make a decision this evening. The first is the infrastructure audit, and you all know how much I love the infrastructure It's an obvious place to start. We're all 100% behind the philosophy of infrastructure first, but it's not finished. So, given that it should have informed sites, I don't actually know how we could be in this position. The next one is traffic modelling, my other pet hate, ECC. Best, I don't say too much about them as a body and the traffic modelling that I've had to trawl through for the last eight years on tendering Colchester borders, but it is incomplete. I was only able to find an executive summary, which contained some fairly flawed assumptions and some unachievable aspirations. And then the last thing that's worrying me is that this committee agreed a strategic land availability assessment, which included a rejection of any Grade One and Two farmland, and yet I read in the papers that because there's so much of it, we're just going to ignore that particular point. So, you know, I think there's not anything wrong in direction we're going in, but I think we do need more time to get that plan right. If I haven't bored you all before, I'll bore you now. My favourite piece of planning, strategic planning I've ever seen, was the Oxford-Cambridge Ark, and what they did is they got a huge map of that area. They put in all the traffic infrastructure, railway lines, roads, bus routes, et cetera. Then they mapped out where all the employment centres were and other sort of smaller pieces of infrastructure, like hospitals and schools and what have you, and then put where the settlements were. And then they could quite clearly say where more houses could then be delivered based on being able to transport people from those dwellings to the workplaces, but also where the investment needed to come, and once that investment came, whether they could then encourage more employment to come, because gentleman behind me forgot your name, terribly sorry, but you know, you talked about the three tests of soundness, and one of those is the economic sustainability of a site. So, I'm really conscious of the fact that in the past, we've basically gone, who's got some land to sell? And people have put their hands up, and then we've kind of post-rationalised all the evidence to basically bring those sites forward, and that actually is not the right way to plan. I know that it's an impossible situation that you're in, that the numbers have gone up, there isn't a lot of land available, but I do feel we have to be making sure that we're not putting ourselves in danger later to have jumped ahead of the game and made the wrong decisions. So, you know, just to bore everybody a little bit with, you know, in the past, three garden communities went to hearing, two of them failed completely. The other one, we thought was going to be all right because it was financially viable, is now basically looking very, very dangerous because you can't put the most fundamental piece of infrastructure in place before you build the houses. Hopefully, you know, that can find a resolution somewhere, but it's not like people aren't trying behind the scenes to sort that out. So, the infrastructure audit needs to inform those decisions. At least at that point, we said we knew we needed certain bits of investment before we started. The transport modelling, I think, you know, it needs to be comprehensive, it needs to be accurate, and it needs to inform where we start making investments. It's made assumptions about the A12. You know, if you're not aware of this, the A12 funding is hugely in question. It's basically come to a massive standstill.
Thank you, Andrea. I'm going to have to cut you off there, but you will get another minute. Karen.
Thank you. I think I missed one of the points as I was scribbling down a response there, so perhaps Andrea can pick that up and let me know in her extra minute. But the decision here is for consultation, and there is an awful lot of evidence out there, and some of it's been available for months, some only in the last week, but we have got another eight weeks for people to look at that evidence, because there'll be two weeks at least prior to the formal consultation of six weeks starting, so I hope that that is long enough for people to review what they need to. The transport and infrastructure evidence, they're not intended to be complete at this stage. They are stepping the process and used to inform the allocations in the draft plan, and they will evolve as the sites come forward, as the consultation responses are considered, because it may be that some sites come out, it may be that some sites are added in, and what we need to do then is complete some of that evidence to inform the final draft of the plan. There is additional transport evidence available on the website now. What we are in a position with at this stage of the plan is to say that there's no showstoppers, but that's not to say that they won't come forward as a result of this consultation, and that's what I mean when I say, you know, some of the sites could change. And then in terms of the A12 schemes, the widening scheme, we are awaiting the outcome of the decision on that in terms of the funding. But in the meantime, we're also being proactive and looking at what is achievable without the A12 widening scheme coming forward, so that will all be taken into account as well.
Thank you, Karen. Andrea, you have another minute.
Okay, well, the last point was about the fact that Grade One and Two has national protection in terms of the MPPF, the MPPG, the 25-year green plan, and some of the else to do with town and country planning. What I'm saying is that why would we go against national policy? You know, yeah, maybe put in Grade Three, but not Grade Two. And the showstopper for me in the traffic modelling, regardless of the fact that our last plan said the A12 and the A120 needed to be in place, is the fact that it's expecting the whole borough to turn into Amsterdam in terms of travel trips and active travel, and it's, you know, it's not really, it's possibly sort of vaguely realistic for a new community where you build these, you know, force people onto buses, don't let them have their cars near their houses, you know, lots of cycle paths and what have you, but, you know, people are talking about one bus a day, I'm sorry, one bus a week. That's, they don't, they won't have that opportunity, and that is an assumption that's unachievable.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Our next visiting councillor is councillor Mark Corey. Mark, you have up to five minutes, and it will start when you start speaking.
Good evening, Chair, good evening councillors and officers. I want to say thank you to the officers to getting to this point already. The evidence base is extreme in terms of how much needs to be collated, and I think they've done a good job in terms of the evidence-led approach, which has led us to removing Middlewick from the plan, for example. And I follow councillor Luxford Vaughan, who has a great depth of knowledge on the process and the technicalities of it, and I support her comments about the process, in particular the infrastructure audit and that driving the allocations. For me, as a Wivenhoe councillor, I come forward to speak to the allocation that we have seen in the plan going forward. I want to speak first of all about the coalescence break. So, the local plan allocated the Gardon Community, partly in the Wivenhoe ward and along the border, and in that plan, it promised a coalescence break. Step by step, we can see speculative development options at the moment being looked into, as well as this allocation taking up that coalescence break. Wivenhoe is a separate town to the city of Colchester, and we want to protect that boundary, that break, and stop us coalescing. That is what this local plan has agreed so far, that is what our neighbourhood plan has agreed so far. Both have been adopted. This allocation goes against that. Secondly, the land itself that the allocation sits in. This overlaps the River Colne Special Character Interest Area, it's adjacent to the coastal protection belt, and it is in a local recovery nature area. More importantly, it is Grade Two agricultural land. As Andrea stated, that is nationally to be protected. We know that we need to look at our own food security and our sources locally. 250 homes have already been allocated for Wivenhoe in the neighbourhood plans, this is my third point. We have already taken homes, and we have developments taking place in Wivenhoe. The neighbourhood plan was thought through, and it's been one of the longest-adopted plans in the Colchester area. It undertook in-depth, detailed research into understanding what we could accept and what we couldn't. 250 was a sizeable allocation. It stretches our current infrastructure, but it was just about acceptable. Adding 175 homes to that plan that we already accepted of 250 is a marked increase, 41% in terms of taking allocations from the Colchester overall picture. That is beyond what other areas have taken. We have no secondary school places available at the moment, and some places available in the primary schools, in one of them, but not the other. So, our infrastructure is already at a breaking point. So, that's why I come back to the process at the beginning. We also have our infrastructure influenced by the Gardon Community as it develops, and at the moment, the Gardon Community developments that start do not have the infrastructure with them, they are to come over time. So, the infrastructure for Wivenhoe will be overrun by this allocation. So, if we go back to the process, we need to be led by the infrastructure first, the infrastructure audit, and I think if that is put in place first before the allocations, then councillors can support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any response? Karen?
Only, I think to say, the infrastructure audit is in fact complete. It's the infrastructure delivery plan which will form the later phases of that piece of work, so that will still emerge. I don't think I was intending to say anything else to this one. I don't know of anyone else, I'll just check the table.
You have another minute, Mark, if you want to use it?
Thank you, Tim. So, for me, I think it's about, in terms of infrastructure, employment, secondary school places, et cetera, and breaking the coalescence break. I haven't heard anything that will overcome that, so basically, I will continue to talk about the coalescence break, the infrastructure, the Grade Two agricultural land, and that's what we will put in to object to this allocation. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we need to check the secondary school places, because I think Colchester Academy is one of the secondary schools that serves Wivenhoe, and I think that has got some places, but we'll have to check. Thank you, Mark. Next visiting councillor is councillor Dave Harris. Dave, you have up to five minutes, and it will start when you start speaking.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to have my say. First, I wanted to say how pleased I am and my neighbours are about the news about Middlewick. The evidence came obviously from independent experts, and it's clear to us that that expert data has never been studied, and as a result, the Wick is now not due to be built on, which is brilliant news. Now, of course, as others' speakers have said, it needs to be tagged as a nature area for future generations. I thank those who signed the petitions, our own petitions, six councillors did in Old Heath, Rowhedge and Beerchurch. I thank the friends of Middlewick, the wildlife experts who visited the site and gave so much of their time and evidence to prove the diversity of life on the site. And finally, I've got to say on, before I leave the Wick, the Chair, that the local plan was dissolved some years ago, and thankfully, it's gone through the iterations and the review and to come back with the evidence. If we didn't have a local plan, I have to make the point to the officers, I'm sure they will agree, if it hadn't have been in there, speculative development, it could have happened by now, from 2016 till now, that's some years ago, so thankfully, that didn't happen, and we had a local plan in place that protected that. Now, next, Chair, I just want to cover the current plan review. I wanted to salute the officer time, as others have said, on this 860-page document, which I hope will be going forward to be consulted on to deal with the housing shortage crisis. Of course, future reviews will come and go, I suppose, to the 2040s, so that's the process. And I wanted to divert what I wanted to say now to page 225, which is a site south of Beerchurch Hall Road for 800... Beerchurch Hall Road for 875 homes. Now, the question I want to ask is, I assume the landowner is bringing this forward for possible build? And I read PP10, which is clear that it lists, along with the map, the conditions that must be met to enable this inclusion. I am pleased to say that bullet point list of things that must happen, which leads to infrastructure first, the way I've read it, and I'm hoping I've read that right, all the things that must be in place before those houses are allowed to be built. Highways improvements, local centres, shopping facilities, retail, commercial, community facilities. And while I'm on the community facilities, Chair, I've got to say that mentions Beerchurch lacks a community centre. Quite right. It has lacked that for some considerable years, by missing out on previous developments. And I want to see that put right. And I will certainly be taking in part in the consultation to say that at the appropriate time. Now, people from Monkwick and Birch Glen and Mersey Road are not going to work all the way to Beerchurch Hall Road to a community centre there, and they'll need to be something that covers both areas. The various bullet points in PP10 says there must be infrastructure to support a community. Yes, yes, yes. So a comment on the usefulness, and of course, the question on landowner being on side with that. And I will finally say, Chair, if I may, while I've got time to say it, by no means a huge, I want to say a huge well done to the many officers involved in this review. I am acutely aware of how many times all of us have plugged into this system and a brilliant effort to actually start. Now, it's all of us and all of the people behind to actually consult and take part in that process to make sure that we steer it going forward. Thank you for having my say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dave. Any response? Karen?
Yeah, I think the only point I wanted to make was just to reinforce what I said earlier about infrastructure. I can't say that all the infrastructure will be in place at the start. What needs to be in place will be, so things you mentioned, Dave, about roads and things like that, and they'll certainly need to be in place. Other infrastructure might come along in phases, depending on the timing of the development. But yes, we certainly picked up about the lack of community centre in Beerchurch. And if we're adding another 800 odd dwellings there, it only exacerbates the problems that residents have. Thank you.
Dave, you have another minute? Don't wish to use it. Thank you very much, Dave. Our next visiting councillor is councillor Carl Powling. Carl, you have up to five minutes. Dave has set an excellent example there by not using all of his. So I look forward to hearing what you have to say, Carl.
I'll have his extra two minutes, then.
You certainly won't.
Well, good evening, everybody, Mr Chairman, everyone present. Firstly, once again, I'd like to thank the officers for their hard work and dedication. It is a daunting task in preparing this revised housing allocation to the local plan, and their efforts are appreciated. I acknowledge that housing allocations impact most wards within Colchester. While we understand the necessity for growth, it is crucial to address the pressing concerns that accompany such developments. The major issues include the strain on our sewage systems, healthcare, schooling, transport and general infrastructure, as we've heard from most people tonight. We are already facing challenges with inadequate sewage facilities, poor roads, pavements, and further development could excavate these problems. Additionally, there is a noticeable lack of doctors, dentists and healthcare services to cater for our growing population. As currently, the Mersey Island doctors have closed their books to any new patients, and our local dentist is full. Without adequate infrastructure improvements, enhancement to healthcare and our sewage systems, Colchester should refrain from additional housing developments on Mersey. Another crucial concern is the affordability of housing for our young people. Many of our youngsters are unavailable to afford homes in Mersey or the surrounding villages, which could potentially drive them away from our community. It is vital that we find solutions to ensure that they continue to live and thrive where they live. We must protect the unique character of Mersey. This is the gem of the region and should be preserved for future generations, and any development plans should be carefully considered to avoid compromising its charm and heritage. Additionally, Mersey Island is now experiencing more frequent higher-strewed flooding, as we heard earlier on today. This must also be considered. The holiday park numbers on Mersey should also be considered in the planning process. They more than triple the island's population during the summer months. Furthermore, with the government's recent announcement of Build Baby Build with new nuclear power stations, and the possibility of Bradwell B being put back on the cards, it is essential to carefully evaluate the potential impact of our community. How are they going to get off if there's a problem? We've only got one way on and off the island, and we can't all have a boat. Finally, I would like to ask the officers, have they explored the possibility of legally challenging the government's excessive housing allocation for Colchester? Our city is already facing significant pressure, and further development could risk destroying the very essence of Colchester and its surrounding villages. Can we legally challenge this allocation on the grounds of procedural errors, failure to consider relevant information or incorrect application of policy? Additionally, maybe a bit hard, could we seek a judicial review if we believe, as a council and a community, the decision was made without proper consultation or consideration on its impact on our communities? I'm also, one more thing I've listened to tonight, I am deeply, deeply concerned by what one of the officers said tonight about Anglia Water. We should consider their profits before them improving infrastructure for the communities. Basically, we said, what I heard it right was, that Anglia Water are going to do the investment up to 2050 or in time. If these houses are to be built, they should improve the sewage systems immediately before they're built, not when they think it's appropriate. It should be people first, their profits afterwards. In conclusion, I urge committee to consider these points carefully as they finalise or revise the local plan, and hopefully we can work better to build a better future for Colchester that's inclusive, sustainable and vibrant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carl. Sandra, I don't think anybody said about Anglia Water's profits being more important, but I'm sure Sandra will confirm that she didn't say.
Yeah, I'll take that point last. I apologise if that's how it sounded, that is not what I meant. What I was trying to explain is that the way, in my understanding, and I've been in touch with Anglia Water over the last few days to get clarity on this point, that the way in which their funding programme works, in that although they have a long-term plan up to 2050, that's based at the time on a baseline that will be based on what it knew about a year or two ago. It runs in cycles, the way in which they then have to decide where the investment needs to go in order to do what they're required to do, which is accommodate growth that's planned. And the point was that the next spending review, in fact, there'll be, for their investment plan, there'll be two during this plan period, will reflect what's in the plan that we were looking at now, rather than what the long-term plan was based on for a couple of years ago when that was projected. So that is not what I meant, and if it came across that way, I apologise. Just turning to some of your other points, I think the need to protect the environment and some of the characteristics that you described at Mersey, I don't think we disagree with any of that. And I think what we would suggest, that considering the evidence has taken that into account in the, what's been proposed, the site that's been proposed, and the level of growth that's been proposed for West Mersey, especially when, as we've heard tonight, when we look at some of the alternatives, I think the, looking at comparative, the opportunities and constraints on Mersey across the whole of Colchester, I think that is evident in what's been proposed and is supported by the evidence. And again, the policies that accompanies the allocation seeks to ensure that all the right safeguards are in place and that the infrastructure can come forward to support the level of growth based on the evidence in a timely manner. And you made a point, I think, about the need for housing, I think, and affordability. And there was obviously a point earlier that was raised about the aging population, but the housing needs to provide for a mix and type of houses for all needs, and the only way to help to seek to achieve that is to take some of the growth that might help deliver some of that need. I think the point about judicial review of the housing targets, I don't know if Karen's got anything to make on that, but I don't think I have.
Karen?
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
I think I know the answer, but please give it to Carl.
I wasn't sure if it was judicial review of the housing number, but you can only JR a decision. The government haven't made a decision that we have 1300, they've set out a methodology which we've implemented for Colchester, which gives us a figure of 1300 a year. We then use the evidence base to assess whether that figure is appropriate. We haven't come across anything, and we've asked various consultants who've looked at pieces of evidence to confirm whether or not there is anything that we could challenge or say that we can't meet the target. To date, we haven't come across anything that justifies a lower target than that. But if that arises as a result of the consultation, then we will implement it.
Carl, you have another minute?
Even though you say about housing allocations affordability, the affordability I've seen on some houses, even on Mersey, they start at 300,000. Who can afford that? If you're going to build affordable houses, even with those numbers, they need to be affordable, and that's simple. And secondly, it still concerns me with Anglia Water. Sewage is essential, so is water. We shouldn't wait to some budget, it should be done when it's being built. End of. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. It is now 7:31, so we're going to take a break. I usually only allow 10 minutes, but given the number of people in the room and the number of toilets that we've got, I think I'm going to let 15 minutes. So we'll back in 15 minutes, please. Thank you very much.
I welcome the statements in policy PP19 regarding the completion of the B1023-B1022 link road, the provision of the country park and the commitment to respect, insofar as it's possible, the strategic aims of the neighbourhood plan. I am however concerned by the slightly vague statement that there is an expectation of a new medical facility. There is far more of an expectation, there is a requirement for it, and the policy should state that clearly. But I think most of us recognise there is a need for new housing for various reasons. If you live in a dwelling now, whether it was built in 1622 or 2022, I can guarantee it upset someone when it was built, but if it hadn't been built, you'd have nowhere to live. That is not so much the debate here, but the debate is how to do it in a sustainable and reasonable way so that it does not have a drastically negative effect on the quality of life of residents both current and in the future. To that end, any resident or business seeing these numbers come forward in their area wants very clear answers to clear questions. Are you going to expand the local doctors? What extra capacity is coming to Colchester General Hospital? Will my children ever get into the local school? Are the roads going to be gridlocked, meaning I can't get to work? Will my business be able to get to their customers on time? What will happen to the already dangerous junction at the end of my road when my village is doubled in size? Is the sewage going to be carried away in tankers? Do the documents in front of us really answer this? I'm not actually sure they all do, but we need them to. There are also some fundamental assumptions which make this plan very suspect. For example, in paragraph 12.19 on Marcus Tay, it basically says it can't happen without A12 and possibly A120 upgrades. So an announcement in April that neither are happening could effectively put this plan into the bin before it has even finished consultation. We've taken the wing and a prayer, something will turn up approach before, and it ended in disaster with the garden communities with millions of pounds and several years wasted. People who were dismissed then as being wrong turned out to be 100% right, so I would urge you to listen to them now. The something will turn up approach has caused endless problems at the tendering Colchester borders, where still nothing has turned up and there is still no road funding. A statement by a government minister saying there is no funding for the link road has meant the key planning condition cannot be met and left the whole project in danger of collapse. I'm also very concerned by the over-reliance on modal shift in some of the transport work. This again seems to be a bit of a wing and a prayer. There's no particular evidence this will happen, and it seems to be put in to make something work which wouldn't work otherwise. Whilst it might be possible to limit the extent in urban areas, the development is going to the rural areas, where many of the allocations will be very car-dependent developments. I'm also slightly confused by the reference to vehicles and clean air, when the timeframe of this plan, the vast majorities of vehicles will be zero emission, so it seems to be a document written for a different century. Taking my own word, whilst there is hyper-local non-car use, the surveys show all work and leisure activities are nearly all outside the village. People will drive. You are not going to get people walking or cycling down the B1022 on a dark wet November evening. If any committee members want to give it a try, then good luck to you, but we probably need a bigger budget for by-elections. I don't want to call the plan half-baked. For a start, that would imply it's been in the oven. The reality is we're still missing many of the ingredients to even get it in the oven. We haven't got the facts on key government decisions, and too much of it is vague and based on hoping that something will turn up. I'm not convinced it's ready for consultation, and committee members, if you are not convinced either, you can only vote one way this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dundas. Response please, Karen.
Thank you. First of all, I can't disagree that there's a need for a medical facility in Tip tree. I think it's one of the first projects that I looked at when I first joined the council, and we're still waiting. So unfortunately, what we can do is we can agree to set land aside, we can agree that a building should be built or is built, but what we can't do is magic GPs out of thin air. So the policy is worded appropriately, in my opinion, to ensure that that provision is covered, but only within the limitations of the planning system. In terms of the A12 scheme, I did mention earlier that we're doing work and the promoters of sites are doing work to test the A12 without the road widening scheme, and that will evolve as the plan evolves as well. We're working with both Essex County Council as a highway authority and National Highways on looking at the strategic road network and the more local roads as well. In terms of delay, you can delay the plan if you want, it's one of the options, I think, in the alternative decisions. It's not something that I would suggest you do, and I'll cover that off in my presentation shortly, but it's never going to be a perfect scenario. You're never going to have a plan that's up to date with every single bit of evidence up to date at the same time, because you're continually having to progress it through from this stage through to the final draft plan, through to examination, through to modifications. At some point, you have to have a cut-off, and you have to say, this is what the best-case scenario, this is what we can do for the time being.
Thanks, Karen. Paul, you have another minute.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree with you on the Tip tree medical facility. We can't counter up GPs, but we could say that a building has to be specifically provided. We can't say who staffs that building, but at the moment it just says there's an expectation of a new medical facility. That doesn't necessarily get you the building, so I think that needs to be more explicit. On the A12, there's been study after study over the years that it's already at capacity, it's over capacity. In fact, it was actually under the previous Labour government in about 2001, the multimodal study came out and said it was needed to be three lanes, so I think we know the answer on that. And what we've learned in the past is that submitting a plan which you know stands a very good chance of being found unsound causes far more delay than spending a bit more time than getting it right in the first place. So that would be my comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next visiting councillor is councillor Claire Osborne. Claire, you have up to five minutes, and the time will start when you begin speaking.
Thank you for allowing speakers and the opportunity to speak, Chair. I note the intention of the construction of new houses in Shobend as Shobend councillor. However, I would like to emphasise the importance of infrastructure development. Before any housing developments commence, it is crucial to ensure the provision of essential community services and amenities. This includes the establishment of shops, post offices, hairdressers and other essential services that will provide residents with a sense of security, stability and enrichment. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Claire. Any response?
Just to say the comments are noted, thank you.
The comments are noted. Do you need another minute?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. Next visiting councillor is councillor Mark Goetzer. When you're ready, Mark.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all the officers for their work on this local plan. I'd first of all like to thank everyone for the removal of Middlewick from the suggested plan, and just to make the point that people who live in heavily urbanised areas need access to open countryside as well as people who live in smaller settlements, and for their wellbeing, for their mental health, and also to make the point about nature, wildlife and the richness and diversity of wildlife that there is on that site. We've also heard from some of the public speakers tonight about skylarks and about nature diversity on alternative sites, so I'll just ask the panel and officers to fully assess that and take on board the points that have been raised by residents on the ecology of the alternative sites. At the moment, they're about to build at the bottom of my street. I live in Morant Road, and they're about to build on the former Paxman's factory, and I think that's absolutely brilliant. Last time they built on the other half of Paxman's, it massively improved the area. So let's be clear, there are sites where building houses improves an area, primarily Brownfield. So could maybe the officers let me know if there is a fully comprehensive list of all Brownfield sites, including those that are not at the moment being proposed for development by the owners, where the owners are maybe just sitting on a derelict building? And if we have that fully audited, that would be something that would be useful for me to know. Also, I'll just make a general point that obviously food imported into this country travelling very long distances is now something that happens, and you find the evidence for this in any supermarket, but it is of course extremely bad for the planet. So just as a general point about agricultural land, the less of it we have, the more we are dependent on importing food from elsewhere, often travelling long distances. So that's just a point I wanted to make in general. I do believe in maximising development on Brownfield rather than Greenfields, but we are where we are. As a council, we all know that the housing allocation methodology is top-down rather than bottom-up, and so we have to work within the parameters that we have to avoid falling foul of legal challenges. But within those parameters, are we sure that we can deliver the kind of housing that we need? Because every time I talk on this subject, people always talk about the people on the housing waiting lists, the families in temporary accommodation, and it's quite right that they do so. But we have had huge development in the Colchester area over the last 30 years or so, and we seem to have more and more people on those housing waiting lists. And I've made a prediction on social media, and I'd love for this to be proven wrong. I was proven wrong about whether Middlewick could be taken out of the local plan, and all credit to councillor Kirkby Taylor, who always said that could happen. But I've predicted that the end of the building of these 11,000 houses, there'll be more people on the housing waiting list than now. Now, I would love to be proven wrong on that. Are we going to be building the level of social housing, and in my view, that should include council housing, but we are limited what we can do, but are we going to provide the kind of housing that those people on those waiting lists need? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goetzer. Response, Karen.
Thank you.
Gone away, doesn't want another minute, obviously.
The first point about the Brownfield sites register, I referred to it earlier and said that it is online. It only includes what we know about. We haven't done an audit of all Brownfield sites in the city area, but what it does include is sites, whether they're being promoted for development or not, it's just what we're told about or what we know about an ad. In terms of housing waiting lists, I'm not going to get out my crystal ball and try and predict either whether that list is going to be longer by 2041 or not, but what I can say is the draft policy includes 30% affordable housing, although the viability report says that might not be feasible in all scenarios. And the new MPPF does reintroduce in the definition of affordable housing, social rent, which is certainly something that has been missing in recent years in terms of the definition. We haven't been prohibited from delivering social rented properties, but it's been more unaffordable, and there hasn't been the expectation, whereas the MPPF now pushes that more firmly to the forefront, so that is something that's encouraging.
Thank you, Karen. Do you want your other minute, Mark?
Yeah, very quickly. Thank you, Karen. Just as a point about infrastructure, which you've heard a lot about tonight, am I right in my assumption that we have no power whatsoever to compel anyone to provide more NHS services, more bus services to areas where there are virtually no buses at the moment? And in fact, we as a country seem to be reaching a point where our infrastructure absolutely can't cope with the level of development. Am I right in saying that things like buses and healthcare, we have very limited control over at all?
Karen?
Health service, less so, I would say. Bus services, what we can do through new development is secure subsidised buses. Developers can pay for a service to operate for a certain period of time, the idea being that it will become feasible and viable as residents move in, that sort of thing. So there's things we can do around bus services, but less so about some other infrastructure. And while I'm on infrastructure, having looked at the wording councillor Dundas mentioned in Tip tree, I think if the plan is agreed, we would look to amend the wording in terms of a health centre. So thank you for that segue in as well.
Thank you, councillor Goetzer. The next visiting councillor to speak is councillor Thomas Rowe. Your five minutes will start when you start speaking.
Thank you very much, Chair, for this opportunity to speak. My statement will focus mainly on Langham, but this does, a lot of what I have to say does resonate with the villages north of Colchester. I think among many areas of concern, the local sewage network is perhaps the largest issue that we face in this area. The Stage Three IADP report published last week definitively states, paragraph 5.6.21, Langham Waste Recycling Centre currently has no headroom available for future growth, and there are no medium to long-term plans for providing capacity for future population growth, and in this case, long-term means out to 2050. In contrast, the interim water cycle study report published the same day makes the vague assertion that Anglian Water have identified improvement plans for the WRC in the AMP8 investment period of 25 to 2030. Hence, the level of growth is likely to be achieved in the longer term. These contradictory statements have presumably both been supplied to your contractor, AECOM, by the Anglian Water. Sadly, this fits into the well-documented 10-year pattern of Anglian Water speaking with folk tongues to Langham Parish Council and Colchester City Council about their investment plans. The current local plan includes planning policies that require joint sign-off of sewage capacity by Anglian Water and the Environment Agency. The 80 planned homes for Langham have been stalled at 23 homes for over two years now, with the Environment Agency unwilling to provide sign-off. We know from FOI requests that the EA have complained formally to Colchester City Council in the strongest possible terms about Anglian Water's misrepresentation and omission of important information whilst promoting development where there is insufficient capacity at the receiving WRC. With all this known history, Langham Parish Council is applied to discover, has appealed to discover that rather than strengthening its sewage infrastructure policy in response to this, Colchester City Council's policy wording in the proposed new local plan has been weakened, so as to explicitly exclude the EA from the sign-off process. Langham's WRC has exceeded its environmental permit in four of the last five years. None of the 23 homes that have been built under the current local plan should in retrospect have been approved. Sewage overflows into streets, gardens and homes are happening more and more frequently. One residence has had their garden flooded with sewage six times in the last three years. Several houses have been flooded with sewage, and one unfortunate resident has indicated with sewage in 2016 and again in 2024. Each time, it's taken 12 months to repair, redecorate and refurnish. And still, Anglian Water has made zero infrastructure investment throughout this period, despite a string of promises to do so. Just over a year ago, the EA shared detailed 10 years' worth of Langham WRC daily flow records with Langham Parish Council, which finally forced Anglian Water to admit that Langham's sewage catchment is the leakiest in their entire network, barring a couple of catchments in the wetlands of the Norfolk Broads. But this is of no apparent concern to Anglian Water, because to quote them directly, when it doesn't rain, the sewage network operates as it should. Our MP has kindly attended three public meetings with Anglian Water in Langham since early 2022. He wrote in strong terms to Anglian Water's CEO, demanding urgent action following our last meeting in the early 2024, but still to no avail. The building of 900 new homes in Langham will inevitably cause a catastrophic rise in sewage overflows whenever it rains unless Anglian Water can somehow be forced to not just upgrade the current WRC, but also to dig up and completely replace the existing 70-year-old sewage network of 16-inch diameter piping with new larger properly sealed pipework. However, the current regulatory framework provides no levers to force sewage undertakers to maintain, repair or upgrade their sewage pipework, other than criminal prosecutions by the EA for individual sewage spillage instances. Such prosecutions are extremely rare, with the EA's limited resources currently being directed almost entirely towards river pollution rather than pollution incidents on land. So council committee members need to decide whether to protect their residents from a coming environmental disaster or align themselves with the Anglian Water's current policy that when it does rain, the sewage network operates as it should.
That's your five minutes, councillor Rowe. That's your five minutes. Karen, do you want to respond? You'll get another minute once Karen's responded. Well, Sandra's going to respond. Okay, Sandra.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to repeat what I've said earlier about the way in which the Anglian Water investment programming and long-term planning work and how it will need to take account of what's in any future plan that this council may agree. I think the discrepancy, if there's any discrepancies that you referred to between the water cycle study and the infrastructure audit, then there'll be, the final water cycle study and the final infrastructure delivery plan will reference and explain those and justify and be, need to be aligned. We will take that up with the consultants just to clarify the reason for those discrepancies, but as they are both pieces of evidence that are progressing and will need to have further work to support the final plan, there's the opportunity to do that. So I think that probably covers the point with everything that's been said before. Thank you.
Councillor Rowe, you have another minute.
Thank you very much. All I'd like to say is that I think that we've seen that the portfolio holder has reservations about this, about this plan, and I think from there we can sort of all draw our own conclusions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Rowe. The next visiting councillor to speak is councillor Kamal Sufalu. Kamal. Kamal, you have five minutes, and they'll begin when you begin speaking.
Good evening, Chair. Under our local plan, health acute and primary care, green areas and biodiversity are important chapters and considerations we ought to have. Understanding the scale of dementia within our area is paramount for providing high-quality local plans and services that serve the whole community. Currently, there are 982,000 people living with dementia in the UK, and this is projected to rise to 1.4 million in 2040. That means by 2040, 1 in 7 residents will have Alzheimer's. The scale and the need to prevent, diagnose, support, live and die well with dementia will only become greater. Therefore, as a local authority, we should explore local dementia statistics, look into integrated care system data and benefit from Alzheimer's society's resources and expertise. It is important that we consider the improvement of our roads and bus services. However, considering the predicted number and percentage just mentioned above, we should not assume that every new resident will come with their private car or will be able to use buses or cars. We should definitely make preparations and considerations for a well-equipped and planned community bus service that will be able to provide dementia-friendly community the essential transport that will be needed. Similarly, indoor and outdoor sports and leisure facilities, communal, cultural and civic facilities should be accessible and dementia-friendly. I believe any future Section 106 contributions should reflect and be spent towards supporting the realities and needs of our future communities. Therefore, my first question is, would it be possible to take dementia and autism-friendly designs as default? This will help with ongoing and foreseeable cost of living challenges. Moving to my second point, non-native and important trees are now expected to kill up to 80% of ash trees across the UK. It is predicted that ash dieback, which is likely to come from continental Europe where infected and imported Chinese species, will cost £15 billion to British society. Similarly, the now infamous Dutch elm disease, which was imported into the UK from Canada in the late 60s, killed millions of trees in the UK and changed parts of our landscape forever. It's worth mentioning that our nature and green landscape give shape to British culture, poems, art, history and even the city arms. For the first time, Woodland Trust stopped selling scotch pine to help prevent the spread of Dothristerma needle bright. The origin of this needle pathogen is thought to be Central America and Nepal. Considering the little wildlife value that non-native and often hybrid species have, and the fact that Woodland Trust run a project with National Trust funded by DEFRA to replace invasive and non-native species, could we make it a condition under our local plan that any trees and shrubs planted by developers are native or UK-grown species approved by the Woodland Trust or other expert bodies? Thank you.
Thank you, Kamal. Karen?
I think what we'll have to do is note those quite detailed comments and take them away and see how we might incorporate them. But in terms of native trees, I'm sure that we do that already. We have particular types of trees and shrubs that we favour on new developments, so that might reassure you.
Thank you. You have another minute, Kamal, if you want to use it.
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Our last in-person visiting councillor to speak tonight, before we have statements from two councillors who couldn't be here tonight that Rob will read, is councillor Martin Warnes. Martin, as with the others, you have up to five minutes, and your time will start when you begin speaking.
Thank you. Thank you for making the time to allow both the public and visiting ward councillors to be able to speak. Good evening, members, and good evening, officers, and thank you to the officers for the enormous amount of work that you're having to repeat in your review, having done it once before, only a couple of years ago. So thank you for your continued diligence and efforts. I'd like to speak, or rather raise, three items that I believe affect my ward, which is Beare Church in Colchester. One is Middlewick, the other is Colchester Town Station, and the third one is the named Beare Church Community Centre developer-funded. But before I do that, I want to recognise the importance of infrastructure and the need for that to be appropriate and spent, because we in Beare Church know only too well the cost of not doing so over years. Middlewick, I welcome the recommendation relating to... Middlewick, I welcome the recommendation relating to Middlewick. It's been a long journey, and much has changed during that time since 2016, seventeen, when I was involved, and probably 2014, when the original local plan was actually talked about. And not least, the change has been around the ecological evidence. So it's right, when the facts change, that the council's considerations change also. And therefore, I'm pleased that we have recognised the need to, in itself recognise the importance of the ecology that's now in show post-Stantec report to be present, and a national designation is needed of that important area and a nature reserve to protect it, something I first raised in 2021. And I would welcome the council, or I do welcome the council's powers to give protection to the wider status. And I move on to Colchester Town, and in particular, the proposed development alongside the station. From the perspective of a ward councillor on the south side of Colchester, not enough in the recommendation looks to improve this station as a facility for the south-side city dwellers. It's something I raised in the past, and I welcome that it's, that the town station is kind of recognised. But I believe that twenty-to-thirty-minute walks could be reduced to five- and ten-minute cycle rides to the station from neighbouring wards, such as my own, or say Newtown and Christchurch. And I would like to see safe and secure cycle parking a provision to encourage the, you know, modal shift that we need, and to discourage the perverse incentive of driving to the north station by those facing long walks to the town station. And this is important at a time when the council has declared a climate emergency and the impact of higher emissions and wider climate change impacts. Surely this is a no-brainer. Beyond this recommendation, I'd like to see open and active discussions with the rail company and rail network to provide support to something that I know the civic society has actually raised an opinion on, and that's to have more direct trains to Liverpool Street from the town station. On the Beerchurch centre, the need to have the facility appropriate to the Beerchurch community is something that I hope a top-down consultative process will deliver. I also bring to your attention that I won't stay beyond me making my statement, because I have got a registrable pecuniary interest in the land to the south of Beerchurch Hall. So I won't stay for any debate and to watch you vote tonight beyond the extra minute that will be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Response, Karen?
Thank you. Noted what Martin said about Middlewick, and also understand his points about Beerchurch and the development there and the need for the community centre. In terms of the town station and the cycling storage provision there, what I can tell you is, there is a levelling-up funded scheme, which is at the final stages of design following consultation. So I think we can say that that is coming in the not-too-distant future, hopefully as part of it'll tie into the roundabout reconfiguration as well.
Thank you, Karen. Martin, you have another minute?
Yeah, thank you. And if you could note that there is a need to actively engage with the rail providers and network, because it is off-putting when you do have to wait longer than really you would want to in order to get a train through to Liverpool Street Station, and the fact they don't run anything on a Sunday, and it's just driving the car, the car usage, around to the north of the town.
Thank you, Martin. We now move on to two statements that we've had from councillors. They won't be any longer than five minutes, because if they are, I will stop Rob after five minutes. The first one is from councillor Sarah Naylor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity to address the committee on behalf of the residents of Lexington and Braeswick Ward, which includes these two areas of the city plus the villages of Aldam, Eight Ash Green, Fordham Heath and West Bergholt. I am also this local authority's appointed governor of the ESNEFT, the NHS Trust, which runs Colchester Hospital. In this role, I attend key strategic meetings with the chief executive and key senior leaders whose role it is to plan for enough hospital beds and services to care for existing and future residents. My background in NHS strategic health transformation is useful for understanding the complexity and impact of local NHS planning. It is fair to say those in touch with me cannot see how Colchester could absorb a further eleven thousand new houses without more hospital beds, GPs, school places and improved roads. I will make two points, one about the capacity of our local hospital, and a second about the impact on my residents in my ward. Tonight is not the time to restate the obvious national points that more houses are needed. It is the time for this committee to acknowledge that Colchester is one of the smallest and newest cities with a legacy infrastructure of a market town. We are bursting at the seams. Colchester Hospital is already full, not just in flu season but every day. Some think that's positive, that we are using the hospital well, but it isn't. It's a siren call that every member and officers of this council needs to listen to. NHS National Policy states ninety-two percent of a hospital's beds should be occupied on average. In Colchester, the average is ninety-eight percent. This matters because when sickness like flu break out, which is every year, there aren't enough beds. Colchester Hospital has recently been operating at one hundred and twenty percent. It means our loved ones being cared for in corridors, and Nurses Union says staff are stressed. While virtual wards are out and out of hospital services need to expand, it's worth understanding that Colchester Hospital leaders say this alone won't solve Colchester's problem. Patients need beds because they're too poorly to be cared for in another place. There is no getting away from the fact. Our local NHS experts tell us we are now short of thirty-eight beds now. Within ten years, Colchester will need one hundred and forty more hospital beds. This will cost one hundred and twenty million to build in today's money. There is also a sense of disbelief from community campaigners that the work that has gone into neighbourhood plans is in effect being set aside on government orders to build forty percent more in new, forty percent more new homes in Colchester. Community campaigners in Lexington and Braeswick Ward and I say valid, neighbourhood plans must be respected. To ignore these adopted plans by expanding village envelopes or housing numbers is in effect riding roughshod over the valid wishes of the communities like West Bergholt and Braeswick, if engaged in the process in good faith. Lexington and Braeswick Ward residents have contacted me to say they are opposed to any further building without the infrastructure first, including upgrading of the A12 and the A120. The villages are supported by their MP and councillors for other rural wards. Rat running is already a significant problem for Aldam and Eight Ash Green. The draft local papers are silent on the impact of the two thousand five hundred homes planned for Markstay on its very near neighbours of Aldam and Great Tay. These block allocations don't appear to have been designed with place-making in mind. Large portions of Markstay and Eight Ash Green allocations are within Aldam Parish Council boundaries. This small rural village, without a school or a shop, will be overwhelmed by the double whammy of unsustainable new housing in its midst and on its doorstep, whilst concurrently, the heart of the village is bisected by giant pylons. Both are direct consequences of government's haste to force through policies without a thought for those most affected. This committee has the opportunity to send a message that it will not tolerate the dismissal of residents and council taxpayers who do the right thing and play by the rules. There needs to be a proper assessment of the infrastructure needed and the cumulative impact on village communities of Lexington and Braeswick and neighbouring wards affected by the housing allocations. The draft local plan is premature. I urge the committee not to approve a draft local plan for consultation until these vital matters are fully addressed.
Thank you. No response to that one? Okay. What I will say is that I think the chief executive of ESNEF, the hospital trust, said that a third of the hospital beds are being taken up by people who shouldn't be in hospital. So until we talk out this, until we sort out the social care crisis, then there will be enough hospital beds, but we have to sort out social care in this country as well. Councillor Paul Smith has a statement that you're going to read out, Rob.
Thank you, Chair. I wish to express my concerns about the proposal to include up to two thousand homes in the area off of St John's Road, Welshwood Park and Bromley Road. This is an excessive development, given the constraints of the existing road network, water systems indeed, this would be true of any development of this size set alongside existing communities. However, there are several important considerations that relate just to this site. The local nature reserve at Welshwood would be total isolate, removing the varied wildlife that currently frequents it. This would have negative impact on biodiversity, which would need considerable offsetting. The road network is constrained by existing developments, with pinch points already occurring and the roundabouts on St John's Road and Ipswich Road and Parsons Heath, Harwich Road, Bromley Road, roundabouts, neither of which are capable of being redesigned to increase capacity without demolishing existing properties. This makes the site unsustainable. This position will only worsen as a new garden community of seven thousand properties is developed adjacent to this site. Indeed, a viability study should be undertaken to see is how, see is this now makes the garden community unviable, as clearly the facilities being provided for the new community will also be used by residents of the proposed development without them contributing to the cost. The site also is adjacent to the Triple SI at Bollock Wood, the oldest recorded managed woodland in the entire country and home to some very rare flora and fauna. An environment impact assessment would also be required with at a minimum an enhances buffer zone and wildlife corridors. It is also partly on prime agricultural land capable of producing more than one crop per year. In short, the size and scope of this proposal, in contrary, not only to good sense but also to the council's own policies. However, we cannot deny that with a housing crisis and over four hundred household in temporary accommodation, Colchester needs more homes. I submit that we need to rethink the permitted densities using existing sites more intensely and considering an expansion of the garden community to accommodate more housing, where at least the infrastructure can be provided on-site rather than impacting the existing communities. Councillor Paul Smith.
Thank you, Rob. That concludes all the contributions from the public and from visiting councillors. So thank you for your participation. I think it's important that we hear from both the public and visiting councillors before we start our deliberations. I would like to echo all the comments made about thanks to the officers for the enormous amount of work they've put in to prepare this local plan, preferred options local plan. We admire what you do. We know we've got, you've done it very thoroughly and very professionally, and we know we've got some of the best planning officers, not only in the region but in the country in Colchester. We're very lucky to have you. So thank you for your hard work, and I'm sure I echo the whole committee by saying that. Having said that, Karen, we've reached half a state, and now is the time to give your introductory presentation.
Thank you. So tonight, the local plan committee is being asked to make the first of a number of difficult decisions in terms of the process of adopting a local plan. And I say difficult because I think everyone recognises the value of having an up-to-date local plan. It's just what it contains that perhaps makes it somewhat challenging. What I do need to remind everybody of from the outset is that the local plan is about so much more than just housing, although that's what we tend to focus on. The plan is an opportunity for local people to shape the places where they live, and it helps preserve those assets that everyone values, like the countryside, the coast and the historic environment. It also ensures that employment land is provided so that our residents have local jobs. And then there's housing, and that's what we've predominantly heard about tonight. Most people will acknowledge, and we've heard that as well several times, that there is a housing crisis. There simply aren't enough houses, and they're not affordable. This isn't an issue that's unique to Colchester, far from it, but we don't really care what happens anywhere else, do we? This is probably the most challenging plan that I've worked on, because finding sites for almost twenty-one thousand new homes isn't easy. This is a mandatory figure, set using the standard methodology which is contained in national policy. And what I would say in response to a few comments made earlier about brownfield land is that we've been so successful in the past, but there's not many of those sites available and left to bring forward now. For many years, we were delivering about ninety-five percent of our housing need on brownfield sites, but we can't do that anymore. And as a result, we do have to look further afield, and this time around, it does mean that we're looking at villages to accommodate a lot more housing. The agenda pack identifies all the sites that we're proposing to allocate for housing, as well as employment, open space, et cetera. And all the policies contained in the plan will be used for decision-making when planning applications are submitted. So you might be pleased I'm not proposing to go through the plan page by page or the eight-hundred-odd pages that there are in the agenda. But what we can do, if members have any specific issues, is to pick them up and go through them in the questions. Local plans are underpinned by a huge amount of evidence, and many documents have been published over the last few months, some more recently. The nature of the evidence does require that it's be prepared iteratively alongside the local plan, and it also is required to reflect consultation responses and to reflect the emerging plan content as it's evolved. This is why some of the evidence, including that around transport, infrastructure viability, are not yet finalised. We can't plan for things until we know with some certainty what's going to be in the plan. So they will continue to evolve as the plan goes through the process prior to being submitted to the planning inspectorate. This stage presents an initial draft plan, and it is a draft plan. It reflects the evidence that's available to date. Some evidence will continue to be refined, not least to reflect the consultation. The preferred options plan provides a set of proposed policies and allocations to meet the identified needs. That's for homes and jobs, and it's recommended that these are tested through consultation. This isn't the final version of the plan. There's some councils that have in the past avoided producing a plan for one reason or another, but there are implications in adopting this approach. The same implications apply if we delay. The council is currently in control of its own future, but without a plan, it's not. And we saw that last time around in Tiptree, what delay can lead to, and that in Tiptree caused speculative development and planning by appeal. So there were several hundred houses allowed in Tiptree, which neither ours nor the neighbourhood plan group had planned for. Now, I'm not intending to be scaremongering here, this is reality. It's what happened a few years ago, and we now have a national policy framework that's concerned with delivering one and a half million new houses, so we can't avoid that. The current local plan will be five years old next February, and from that date, some people will argue that it's out of date, not least because the housing figures are based on an old methodology and not the new standard methodology. We also have the issue of needing to demonstrate a continuing supply of deliverable and developable housing land that's available for sites and available to deliver now. Those that we've allocated in the last local plan, although it was only adopted four years ago, was actually was actually submitted in 2017 and those sites will start to run out and this will also make us vulnerable. The new local plan intervention criteria will also give ministers more opportunity to intervene in our process and get involved in producing our local plan if need be. So it's not just, the wording is no longer just focused on housing, but it's also focused on whether we've complied with relevant legal tests and how far we've progressed with producing our own local plan. And the secretary of state now can consider national needs. So if there's a national need for new housing, that can be taken into account to justify intervention. The main recommendation tonight is to publish the plan for consultation. And this is one step in the process. Changes can be made as a result of a consultation and as further evidence based work is developed. This is not the time to be suggesting site A be removed or site B should be changed because we're not back to the drawing board or, you know, back to the start completely. But it would involve commissioning a lot more evidence and delaying the process by a considerable amount of time, which takes me back to the delay and the implications of not publishing a plan. So far tonight, we've been asked to remove Langham, which is 900 dwellings, Messing, which is 25, North East Colchester, which is 2,000, Mersey 300, Wiven Hall 175 and 240 in the town centre. So that amounts to 3,640 dwellings. But what I haven't heard is if we delay, where these houses go. No one suggested any alternative and preferential sites. So as a result, your officers are therefore recommending the draft plan. We're recommending it for consultation at this stage and to allow people to inform what goes into the final plan. And we'll be happy to answer any questions that the committee might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. To be fair to Mr Andrew, who was our first public speaker, he did say there should be extra building at the Hyde. But I think every brownfield side of the Hyde is now allocated, isn't it? But he did at least suggest an alternative, which I think you've made a fair point. I've already got indications from councillor Ellis and councillor Barber. Can I see who else wants councillor Smalls? Right, let me, let me mark these down as I see them. Is it everybody? Yeah, it looks like it. Right, well, I'll start with councillor Ellis because he, he caught my eye first and then I'll go through the, I'll go through them as I see them. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm as fallible as anyone else, but as a councillor, my decisions, my decisions, I'll put my teeth in, have always been evidence based. Sheer volume of information that we are being asked to absorb in quite a short period of time before this meeting is frankly too much, even for me, given how late it's been made available on, in the evidence base on the website. Large documents were published on Friday, I think Friday afternoon, Friday the 14th, but tucked away at the bottom of the evidence base, I only found them this morning. I was expected to see them in date order at the top. They've appeared even though they're pre 2024, the February 2025 ones are at the bottom. Unacceptable, in my opinion. To be more positive, I'm pleased that the infrastructure audit is yielding so much useful information about the state of Colchester's infrastructure and as expected, highlighting our deficits or development constraints, as I tend to refer to them, which conservatively currently are forecast at 300 million come 2041, but will be considerably higher when several missing lines of requirement and costs such as primary care are filled in or when someone points out to ACOM that the A120, A133 link road is far more, is far from fully funded at 90.3 million. I mean, far from fully funded. The infrastructure audit and delivery plan was always envisaged by me. And as it happens, the current portfolio holder to be used to inform and guide site selection. Sadly, it's incomplete still. We're awaiting stage four, the delivery plan. Surely that's key to site selection and certainly to any allocation consultation. I know Karen has disagreed with that this evening. I'll hear what she has to say shortly. Consultees will struggle to respond positively if they have no idea what infrastructure needs will be met by development within the allocations. Without tangible benefits such as a new health centre on Mersey or in Copford, community facilities or road infrastructure to enable allocations to work and integrate into the communities, you will likely see negative responses. Currently, this draft plan has insufficient detail to consult on. And having read the SLA, the stage two assessments and the sustainability appraisal, I'm still not certain how sites have been selected over others. People need to understand this stuff. If you study the transport evidence added to the evidence base on Friday, there is scenario modelling. But oddly, whilst they've modelled with and without the A120 improvements, all of the modelling assumes the A12 realignment scheme is happening. As yet, that's not been announced. It offers no concrete explanation as to how the forecast additional 7,000 journeys per day will be mitigated against, other than hoping that 3,500 of them will be taken by bus, bike or foot. There is no evidence to show that they will, nor analysis of how we make that happen in reality. It's wishful thinking and that doesn't make for a sound plan. On the transport subject, I have two large blob allocations in Markstey. We've heard about them this evening, one for 1,500 homes, one for 1,000. Both appear to find and condition on the A12 and the A120 schemes being deliverable. Between them, they make up a whopping 23% of the 11,000 additional dwellings to be found in the planned period. So their deliverability and proof of it is key to this plan's soundness. Had city planners accepted Markstey's requests over the past couple of years to talk to them about holistically planning their growth, I doubt we would have chosen the two sites to draft in the draft allocations. They only serve to add to the fragmentation of Markstey. Is to Tay Green, a much larger development than currently published. Can someone tell me this evening if this is the much larger community we are to expect in Markstey? It was, it was referred to by Mr Cairns when I had a meeting with him and Markstey Parish Council a week or two ago. If so, why are we being so cloak and dagger about it? Surely now is exactly the time to discuss these scheme ideas transparently. Opacity breeds mistrust. We've had enough of that with the last plan for West Hay. I may try later, Tim, you won't, you won't want me to. But for now, Chairman, I'll leave this here. This government's house building targets of 1,300 homes a year, a 40% uplift for Colchester, is what's led us to this particular point in the local plan process. I do understand the difficulty we find ourselves in trying to meet those targets. They're eye watering large and somewhat soul destroying for a city which has consistently delivered on its housing commitments. I fully understand the requirement for a local plan, but I also know from experience that now is the time to challenge evidence and assumptions. I'm not prepared to see this go out to consultation without stage four of the infrastructure audit, the delivery plan part and much more detail around infrastructure delivery. Karen said that I have to wait until regulation 19 or pre reg 19 for that. I don't wish to do so personally. It's key information for this consultation, inform site allocation and importantly, it's what the planning portfolio has asked for this evening. Thank you. That's me.
Karen.
Yeah, only a few brief comments rather than repeat what I've said earlier. I have a different view on the infrastructure evidence and when it should be completed. But in terms of, you know, you mentioned in particular the health centre in Mersey and that being required. Mersey is a worst case scenario than Tiptree probably because that also, we've been trying to identify a site for 20 plus years, I think. We did actually identify a site in one of the existing allocations in Offseaview Avenue. Land was set aside, but the health bodies didn't take it up. So what more can we do as a planning authority? The name Tay Green, there's nothing cloak and dagger about it. It's simply over the years, various sites in Markstey have been called various different things. And I suspect one promoter has tried to distance themselves from another and the different people that have been on board at different times have given their schemes different names. I don't think it's anything more than that, someone referring to one site by a name which isn't any longer used. But that's as far as it goes.
On that specific point briefly.
On that specific point, sorry, Rachel Faulkton was at the meeting with me and with, and with Simon. He was saying that the 1,000 home allocation was the beginning of a much larger allocation. It wouldn't be built out till we had or started until they had master planned the whole thing. So if that's happening, that I would suggest is probably envisaged to happen before the 15 year plan period is over, probably at review. And 1,000 homes doesn't actually give you very much infrastructure, Chairman, as you know, whereas a larger development might well do so. So doing, doing it piecemeal probably isn't the most sensible thing to do. Actually talking to the community about a holistically planned development, not a new town, but a, but a village community would now would be the time to do that. If that is what your plan is that you haven't yet spoken to us about, Simon said you were going to be. That explains my.
Karen.
And, and Tay Green is the, is the thing which is referred to by the county council saying they would need a new secondary school, for instance, at Tay Green. And there's also in the, in the IDP, there's been some, they were looking at the numbers of those where they were looking at 1,940, I think, being built out or 80 being built in the first five years of the plan, 1,833 in the next ones. So it's obviously a scheme which is being looked at. I'd just like to know a little bit more.
Karen.
Yeah, I think, I think the scheme is available on the website to look at. It was submitted under the call for sites. So the promoters of the site north of the A120 have put a site forward for the plan period. We haven't allocated all that they've put forward for the plan period. They also identified other land within their control which could come forward at a later stage. So I think everything's out there in the open, nothing for us to discuss as far as I'm concerned. What is in the plan, in the draft plan, is what we're proposing to be delivered in the plan period, no more. And I'm at a bit of a loss about the piecemeal development argument because the garden community was intended to address concerns about piecemeal development and to enable us to look comprehensively at a larger scale development. Maybe Markstey was too big at the time. You know, what is the ideal size? We're suggesting 2,500, but you're telling me that that's not enough. You know, is it seven to 9,000 like we've got in East Colchester?
I wasn't saying it's not enough. You're actually putting, you're putting 1,500 of those on, on one side of the road, which is a completely isolated development, as again, Simon agreed. And, and you're putting 1,000 to the north of the A120, which seems a mad allocation, given the state of the A120. But I was told I shouldn't worry about it because it was going to be part of a much larger scheme, which might give us some infrastructure later.
Sounds like you can add the 2,500 under the 3,000 that is not wanted. Karen. Councillor Barber.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, just for starters, because it hasn't really been too much of a point of discussion is on the housing numbers that are being proposed in the, in the plan, which I know we've gone through in briefings, et cetera, but I suppose just to understand as we're voting this evening. The calculation for the central methodology, is that a much more restrictive formula than has previously been used? And what are your understanding of some of the grounds that can be used to challenge the, the outcome of that and varying the standard methodology? I understand it's very constrained now, even more so than the constrained formula in the past. For example, we can't use infrastructure deficit as a grounds to argue against the housing number. So if I just have that answer to that one, please, then if it's okay, I'll just go on to my wider question and point if Karen, that was okay. Just, I think for use for the committee really.
I think if it's okay with me, then I, I think that's the way we do it in Colchester.
I did say, Chairman, I did say.
Karen.
Yeah, the standard methodology is a lot more strict now, but, and what I haven't had a chance to look up since your question was quite short is the ways of the reasons to not stick to the standard methodology. So if you want to ask the second part of your question, I will look those exceptions up.
Provided the chairman is happy, then.
Of course, of course, Lewis, go ahead.
So I, I think, I think the, one of the points of contention I expect this evening is going to be at what point we're putting forward our infrastructure delivery plan and whether it's prior to regulation 18 consultation or prior to the regulation 19 consultation. I, I guess my concern, having read through the evidence base put forward at this stage, is that there's a high risk that our plans could be found unsound. And my basis for that is that the level of unknowns with infrastructure at this point of time are so significant that I am worried there's so many variables that could go wrong with the assumptions that the likelihood of the plan resembling this in any way, or if it is, then it would be found unsound examination. If I draw on one example in the highway study, the comment is that the highway authority, transport authority, highway authority is likely to not support the proposals on the basis that we need effectively 50% reduction in car usage. A 40% if we just take into, if we take into account the existing allocations, but 50% if we just use the new allocations. Although there's some suggested changes around that being proposed, I, I think that, I would like to see that now because I'm concerned that actually the, the level of unknowns about the deliverability of the sites are such that actually I, I need that certainty at this point because otherwise we're just going to come back to this point again. Because I'm not convinced that work will show the deliverability and soundness of the plan from, if we just think about it internally. So I need that satisfaction at this point effectively is what I'm saying. To know that if I'm putting this plan out to consultation, the points we're saying need to happen, we have a firmer grasp that they are going to happen. So for example, if I draw on the sewage point about Langham, I, I'm not so satisfied about resting on an assumption that it will happen. I would prefer to see that knowledge at this point. If we're saying that's going to have to happen to make the plan sound, I feel that should be in front of us at this point of time. So I'm not convinced right now that the level of variables are such that the plan would be deliverable or sound when we come to regulation 19 consultation. I prefer that certainty at this point. And I say that because of the experience of the garden communities where we were told this would come forward, the plans around infrastructure, et cetera, and it, and it didn't. And then the inspector found it unsound. So I wouldn't want us to go through that again. The scale of the housing numbers is something that we haven't had to deal with before. So the simple reality is the risk factor of deliverability of infrastructure goes up incomparably to before. So while we may have had challenges previously, my view is that the challenges are so great to overcome between regulation 18 and regulation 19 that we're unlikely to be able to meet that at this point. So I'd rather have that certainty at this point. So I would need that to be addressed to feel satisfied about putting it to consultation this evening. I do also would like some clarity about the removal of Middlewick. And I don't ask this from the perspective of thinking it's better to have Middlewick in. This is more that we were told that a site couldn't be removed from the local plan and individual site at previous committees. And I'd like to understand how that change has come about from that position previously. Because I think there was quite a repeated view put forward that actually one site just couldn't be removed. And that's not me saying I think the site should be kept in, it's just us understanding how that works. So some clarity around that would be useful, too, please. The neighbour plan point, just to draw end to my comments, I suppose. There will be a lot of communities feeling very aggrieved and I appreciate the policies are drafted as such that there's a minimum of housing rather than a maximum in the neighbour plan and the previous policies. But in some areas, sites being put forward are the sites where the neighbour plan said that's the least desirable. And they were, there were other alternatives that they were putting forward. So I think that's just more of a comment that's probably to note more than a response. But I would like to see more of the evidence base coming forward at regulation 18. like to see more of the evidence base coming forward at Regulation 18, stage 19, because I just think the leap is too large for us to be able to have any confidence that we won't be back here in the near future, effectively, which I think is higher risk to the authority and development. Thanks.
Thank you. Before you answer, Karen, it's coming up to nine o'clock. We have to make a decision whether we want to continue. The cutoff point could be at nine o'clock. But my recommendation is that we do continue, given we're going to have to take another break in 15 minutes, because that's also what the rules say. Are you happy to continue? I think I'm looking at a cutoff of 10 o'clock. I think if we go past 10 o'clock, we'll be too tired to make sensible decisions. Does everybody agree with that? Okay. Thank you very much. Karen?
Thank you. I'm waiting for someone to give me the exceptions. But I'll look at, I'll address the other points that were made, Lewis. First of all, this is not the final plan. By the time we submit the plan, we will have the evidence base. There's no point in me having a detail, saying I've got a detailed evidence base on infrastructure and Markstay needs this, this and this, and then Markstay doesn't appear and we've got to go away and do it again because we're looking at sites elsewhere. So, you know, we will not be recommending a plan to you that we consider to be unsound, because it will be us that have to stand in front of or sit in front of an inspector and justify the approach that we've taken. And, you know, the previous local plan examination, when the two garden communities were found to be unsound, not the plan itself, the two garden communities, took place at a time when the planning inspector weren't prepared for that level of strategic growth. It was a different scenario, different national guidance then compared to now to reflect that approach. And in terms of the Middlewick position, our position hasn't changed. This plan doesn't remove Middlewick. Middlewick is an existing allocation in the adopted plan, and that will remain the case until we have a plan to replace it. So this plan does not include Middlewick, but it's based on a comprehensive view of all sites. So the approach to how that's dealt with hasn't changed. Sandra might have the answer to the methodology.
Sandra?
Yeah. I think the way in which it's worded now is it's about an exception to a different way of counting, of applying the methodology, rather than exceptions for not meeting the needs. And I'm struggling to find anything that specifically identifies what those circumstances are. But I can say that that was considered in our housing needs evidence around whether or not there were any factors that applied to the exceptions for the way in which you would count your standard methodology and apply the figures that go in that generate what comes out. There's no guarantee if you were to do that that they would necessarily be lower, they could be higher. But in terms of a list of other circumstances, they, I don't think they exist in as an exception now. I think it is about how you apply the methodology and what you put in, rather than an exception for not being able to meet the needs.
Okay, I'm going to move on to our next speaker, which is councillor Fay Smalls. Fay?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry. First of all, I'd just like to thank all the officers that have been involved in this work. So it's been an enormous piece of work. Thank you. I've got three main things. I'll try and keep it as brief as possible. Number one, the Hive. So I'm a councillor for the Hive, and I actually welcome the allocations of housing in the Hive. What I've noticed is in all the Hive items, I think there says there should be contributions towards flood risk solutions. The issue we have at the moment is on Haven Road, there is already flooding. So we know, I'm part of the Hive task force, so we've already got a flooding problem. It's not a risk, there is a flood problem. So would contributions go towards that Haven Road flooding, or is that going to be treated as a separate thing altogether? So that's one of my things around that. Number two, in terms of the consultation process, I'm really welcome that we're specifically looking for contributions from younger people via the sixth form and the youth panel. So I think that's great. What I would like, love if we can add to that is could we have some kind of consultation with the institutes, the students at the institute? And I think that would be particularly important because some of those students, they're learning the skills that should hopefully help us deliver these housing in future in the plan. So I would really like it if, I know everyone can take part in the consultation, but it would be nice if what we're doing with the sixth form, we could echo that and do that with the institute. And number three, Middlewick. So I'm racing through, trying to race through this. So I don't want to, I just want to get clarity. So I welcome that in the draft, we no longer have houses allocated on Middlewick. And I've really appreciated all the people who've gathered the evidence. I'm thankful that the council put forward the independent ecologist. So I'm happy with how that's gone. I just want clarification that within the local plan process, what we've got now for Middlewick is pretty much as far as we can go in that process. And I do think Sandra did say that earlier. And that, for me, what I see now is that the issue with Middlewick is really management. And I'm not sure that's something we can do within the local plan. But I would want, it would just be helpful to have that clarified, that in terms of management, really, we need to be looking, well, it's owned by the MOD, so it'd be really for them. And hopefully with the support of Natural England, which haven't to date given triple SI, triple SI status. But that is something that hopefully they might be able to do in the future. But that isn't down to us. I'd just like that, some clarity around that, that we're doing as much as we can in this process. And now it's to greater bodies, really. Thank you.
Thanks, Fay. Karen?
Thank you. In terms of the Haven Road flooding, if new development impacts on the existing problem in terms of making it worse, then section 106 funds could be used towards that scheme, but only if it meets the statutory test. So it can't, section 106 can't be used to address existing problems, basically. There's also the issue of timing as well, because what I wouldn't want to say is, yeah, we can allocate however many thousands of pounds towards that, and then the development doesn't come forward or doesn't come forward for 10 years or so. And all the time you're waiting for that to happen. So there's just a sort of caveat there. In terms of involving the institute in consultation, we would be happy to do so. I think in the past, we've struggled to engage them. So if anyone's got any contacts, that's how we got in with the sixth form college, because councillor Goacher helped provide the contact there. And Middlewick, around the clarity, I think you picked up that Sandra had mentioned something earlier. And yeah, management is out, management of that open space is outside the local plan process. What we can do is allocate it for certain use, well, not certain uses, but certain designations. But that's as far as we go.
Thank you. Councillor Parsons?
Thank you, Chair. If I might, with your permission, Chair, say a couple of things very, very briefly about health and wellbeing evidence, and then transport, and if perhaps Karen could respond before I speak about the water cycle. Okay, thank you. Health and wellbeing evidence, we've heard, and you've just referred to the GP situation, which we also heard about at Langham. Can I clarify that the GP situation on Mersey is not simply about a site? The issue is, and this is actually quite important for the local plan, that the GPs, there are three part-time GPs, and there is no indication that they are looking to take on extra GPs. The list has been closed since last summer. So we've got people who have moved on to the island in the last 12 months, and they cannot register with a GP, not just on the island, but on the mainland as well. And that means that even those with small children, because the GP is the access to a number of other NHS services, they can't access things like speech therapy for children, hearing tests, those sorts of things. So this is really critical. But the root of the problem is that whereas when education was made compulsory, fairly quickly after that, county councils were made responsible for ensuring there were enough school places available, when the 1946 NHS Act was set up, there was no comparable legislation that made anyone responsible for ensuring there were enough GP places. So there is no likelihood in the immediate future of any permanent resolution to this. We've written as Mersey councillor to health secretary, including asking him to meet with Angela Rayner to see if we can exempt areas without GP access from house building targets. We've not had a response. We wrote in October. Secondly, on the transport one, one I couldn't see anywhere, and forgive me if I've missed this, because we've had about 2,000 pages of stuff to wade through. Mersey sits opposite a nuclear site and could require evacuation in any emergency, either from that or if, for example, there were wildfires that happened. Now, I couldn't see anything about how long it would take to evacuate it. Obviously, there should be a plan in terms of resilience planning from the county council. It's particularly important because 11 days ago, the Prime Minister announced he was going to rip up the planning laws on nuclear, so that more than just the eight designated nuclear sites could have small modular reactors, which I understand are about 25% of the size of the largest nuclear power stations. Bradwell is already one of those eight designated nuclear sites. So it looks like the government is talking about changing the planning laws and making it easier to develop a nuclear facility on Bradwell. Do you know, and it really should be in the plan, how long it would take to evacuate Mersey, either in winter, with the current seven and a half thousand people, or in the summer, when we've got an extra 3,000 or so people in the caravan parks and so forth? Because that really should be informing any decisions about house building.
That's the first lot of questions. I'm not sure all of it is relevant to this local plan period, but answer as best you can, Karen.
Sandra looks poised to answer for me.
Sandra, I don't mind. Whoever can give answers, perhaps both of you.
The answer, I've got no idea how long it would take to evacuate Mersey, no. And I didn't actually pick up a question in relation to health and wellbeing, other than you said there's unlikely to be any resolution.
I'm just concerned that in the health and wellbeing section, it entirely presents the GP situation across Colchester positively. Whereas what we've heard about Langham is there was a problem with GP access. As I've just said, there is a very serious problem on Mersey. Surely that should have been in the evidence?
Yeah. I think the health and wellbeing evidence and in the infrastructure audit certainly states that the position that you say about not taking any, not being able to register any patients at the moment, in the ACOM report, it certainly reflects that. And the health and wellbeing evidence is more general about place making and, you know, behaviours and that type of element. But the ACOM report certainly does reflect that to be the case. We can sort of double check that that's consistent throughout, but certainly I know it says it at some point, because I remember reading it and feeding that, we specifically fed that point in when that information came through. And it is in there from recollect, from memory.
Okay, thank you. Water cycle. So the last two meetings, I've asked for assurances that the water cycle study would be available before the site allocations were done. Well, we've got the site allocations, but we've only got the interim water cycle study. Now, this is the one that really gives me serious concern. We've got a figure that is quoted of 125 litres of water household usage. I'm not sure where that figure has come from because the latest figures, and I've got them for each of the last few years, 2023, the average in the UK was 140 litres. In affinity water, which is the area that's to the east of the river Colne, and therefore includes Wyvenhoe, it's 157 litres per household. Now, leaving that aside for one minute, what that means is even if we take those 125 litres per household, multiplied it by 365 days, we get about 45, 46 cubic metres of water usage a year. What that adds up to with 1,300 houses is 3% of the capacity of Ardley reservoir each year that we're going to be taking. In 10 years, it's 30%. Now, when we actually read the interim water cycle study, what it says in section 4.2, the AWS WRMP informing AMP8 shows that the Essex South WRZ is predicted to go into supply deficit by 2025 if no water resource interventions are implemented. This is predominantly due to a growth in demand coupled with a fall in water supply available. It then goes on to say the affinity water WRMP informing AMP8 shows that Brett WRZ should have a surplus for most of the local plan period until 2040. Let me just translate that gobbledegoo.
Can you wind up your comments? Because we're going to take a break, and then we've got lots of other members who want to speak, and we're going to finish by 10.
Essex South WRZ, it's the Essex South Water Resources Zone. It's not Basildon or Southend. It's the area that is primarily Colchester and a small rural area stretching south to Mersey around it. And it says we are going into supply deficit by 2025 because of population increase in that area. Well, what that's basically saying, there is no water resources available. Now...
I think we've got the gist. So how long, how much longer? Because you're depriving other committee members of their say. Two more minutes? I can't give you two more minutes?
One minute.
I'll give you one minute. We'll time it, please, Rob.
Right. There are nine areas in the UK where abstraction of groundwater has brought seawater into the aquifer. Three of those are within 15 miles of Colchester. One is at Manning Tree. And yet that is not addressed in the water cycle study. It really should be, and that will increase as we get more and more climate change. That needs to be addressed because we are at risk. You said there was no reason to challenge the quotas. There's the reason. We cannot supply the water to homes that are there already. And we're talking about we will increase the extent to which people cut down on water. That's double counting. We've already done that in these figures, 125 litres instead of 140 litres.
Thank you. Who's going to answer that? Sandra?
Yeah. I think the only actual question was about where the standards came from. And I think they're based on the standards that the averages, the standards that the companies use that have supplied the, supplied that information to the consultants doing the water cycle study. We're by no means specialists in water resources, which is why we appoint consultants like ACOM, who are undertaking this work. And I have no doubt that they are following the standard guidance and the correct methodology to inform this process. And there will be a requirement for all the statutory bodies, including Environment Agency, to, through consultation, to confirm that... to consultation to confirm that they're satisfied with the evidence that has been produced to support the plan making process.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break. Please be back in your seats in five minutes. Thanks. Okay, we're, yeah, ring the bell. That might get the officers back in their places. Or they may have left Shelley to answer all the questions. No, no, Sandra's there. Anybody seen Karen? She done runner. Marie's off to find her. No, here she comes. Here she comes. Right, while Karen's making her way back to the seat, we'll go on with... If we can keep our comments concise, that would be really helpful because I do, I think after 10 o'clock, we are going to be struggling because I'm getting tired already and we want to have a good debate and make some good decisions tonight. So I'm going to go down the line and see who wants to contribute. councillor Spindler.
Yeah, just a quick one. It's about the building on Beerchurch Hall Road, the 875 hoses. We've just had 500 hoses built on there within a mile of each other. There's a lack of infrastructure there totally. There's nothing. The doctor surgeries are over spilling on Chubb End and on Circular Road, I can't think of it. Abbeyfield surgery, they can't take no more patients. Something that needs to be put in place before they even think about building any more hoses on there, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mick. Another healthcare question, Karen? Nothing more to say or...? Yeah, I just think we will make the representations. I think we're all agreed that there needs to be infrastructure, some at the beginning and then as it's phased throughout these developments. But you make a very good point, councillor Spindler, about that development and the healthcare needs in that area. Thank you very much. councillor Alakia Kinyame?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, officers. A comment around infrastructure delivery plan. And I noticed that the document says this will be done with contributions from developers. I would like clarification around how we would make sure that the voices of existing residents in these communities and new settlers are taken into account. And these IDPs are flexible, pragmatic and adaptable as we go along doing them. I would also like to know what the plans are within this to support new businesses and existing one in these new settlements, businesses and services like post offices. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, the first point around how existing residents get taken into account, then certainly through the consultation that we're proposing. Through yourselves as ward councillors, you'll notice that some of the site-specific policies have a bit more detailed information in them than others. So we heard mention of the community centre in Beerchurch, for example. And the same happened last time around really, and councillor Ellis was very, I'll sing his praises here, because very involved in securing infrastructure in Lardla Hay. And it was tailored towards, and the type of development as well, it was tailored towards what the local people needed. So as ward councillors, you can also get involved in that as well. Ben, I can't remember your second point, sorry.
How we support start-up of new businesses in these settlements.
Yeah, it's not so easy on the employment side and business side as it is in terms of housing because all we can do really is ensure that there's sufficient land made available for commercial developers to implement really and develop schemes. We can certainly base that on an evidence base, which I think is online around employment needs. And that focuses on what sort of sectors, what type of buildings and floor space might be involved, that sort of thing. So that's as far as we can go unless, as a council, we wanted to get into the commercial development side of things, which I don't think there's an appetite for.
Thank you. councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Chair. Now, I've got a question and a point. The question is around the distribution of new homes across the time period. If we were to come to a situation where a future government were to revise the targets, and that could be up or down, bearing in mind our current fertility rate in this country is 1.45, so we've got a massively declining population in reality, and we could well end up in a position where we don't need as many houses. We could have a situation here where a large number of the allocation was built in one place and everywhere else effectively didn't get any, and then we didn't need to build any more. I'm obviously exaggerating here. And that would be quite unfair on the place that got loads of them and then everywhere else didn't get very many. So is there a way in which the houses are distributed evenly over time as best as possible? So that's the question. The point I'd like to make is the employment study that when came out recently is attached to this as one of the evidence packs, I think it was, it's excellent. I read it. It's really, really very good. And it's very granular. It goes into a lot of detail around the types of businesses and the employment projections and the way that it goes into the labor supply, labor demand and that sort of thing. And I didn't really see any reflection of that in the plan itself. And given that the plan is supposed to be employment and housing hand in hand, I think it would be useful if more of that employment study made its way into the plan so that we could see how housing and employment would run in parallel. Similar to what councillor Loxard Borm was alluding to with the Oxford Cambridge ARC infrastructure first, employment second, housing third approach. Whereas ours is very much housing first, everything else afterwards. And I think if we had some of the employment stuff, which we've clearly got, but I just don't see it featured in there. So if that could get in, I think that would be really good. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Karen?
Yeah, I can pick up the first point around the phasing and should the targets reduce, for example. I think more than anything, the market will help determine that. So even if we allocated everything in the plan, you've been required to go through the planning application process. And I suspect that house builders and developers wouldn't all want housing in one area. So for example, Tiptree, you could only sell a certain number of dwellings in one settlement at any one time. So not everyone wants to live in Tiptree. Hard as that might be to believe. So you'll have to have a range of sites across the city area offering a range of different house types as well. So I think that wouldn't be so much of a problem. You know, bearing in mind the 2017 plan that I referred to, we're building out now. Some of those sites are yet to come forward. So it does tend to phase itself. And then there might be infrastructure constraints which mean that we can't grant planning permission for something until a certain time. So again, that might stagger the development a bit more. But Sandra, if you can comment on the employment, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sandra?
Yeah, I think there's always a balance to be struck between how much you sort of draw from the evidence base to put in the plan itself and how much you let the evidence sort of, you know, be the supporting information. But I think we can certainly look at, as we revise the draft, what more we can take from that evidence to actually embed in the plan itself to help sort of flesh out a bit more on some of the, what the employment evidence is telling us.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Kelly. councillor Moffat?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the officers for putting all of this together. It's clearly a very challenging process amidst an evolving landscape. So yeah, it's not an easy thing to do. It's definitely a top-down process from the numbers point of view, but it's also a bottom-up process, which is why well-timed consultation is part of that as well. And we're a very fast-growing city, so it's never going to be easy, is it? There's a lot of valid views here tonight, lots of information, evidence and various work streams coming together. I've got one very quick question. I'm always quite concise. And another one that may or may not be quick. The first one is, you mentioned earlier that the infrastructure audit is all but complete and it also was aware of the various allocations in the plan currently. If that's correct, do you feel that the infrastructure audit is already to a point informing the draft plan? So that's the first question. The second one is, given that this has a 15-year horizon, how are we proposing to prioritise? Is there a methodology behind it? And apologies if I've missed that in a lot of the information. Thank you.
Thanks, Vanessa. Karen?
So yeah, I'm content that the infrastructure audit is complete to an extent that allows us to consult at this stage of the plan making. And sorry, I missed a point about the 15-year plan horizon.
How are we proposing to prioritise? Because obviously it's going over a number of years and we are only delivering, you know, whatever our target is each year. So is there a methodology around prioritising each allocation?
All right, thank you. That comes back a bit to the point I made previously around the market determining how many houses are built because there's only a certain limit as to how many will be sold in any one year. And that in itself regulates the delivery.
Thank you.
Yeah, just very quickly. So there must be some that are easier to do than others. So for example, if the infrastructure is really difficult for whatever reason, for example, are there any criteria that would be looked at?
Yeah, thank you. Certainly in the last plan, I think we phased some schemes because of infrastructure constraints. And we said that they couldn't come forward until something had been resolved in respect of those. So that basically pushed them later in the plan period. Fiveways Fruit Farm at Stanway, again, that was in the previous plan. And that was phased because of mineral extraction on part of a site or to the south of the site. So there are certain criteria that means that we do need to put phasing in place.
Thanks. councillor Kirkby-Taylor?
Thank you. I'll keep this even briefer than my usual comments. First off, Yeh Middelwick, well done and thank you. Second, I want to echo what's already been said about the infrastructure. Lack of detail scares me, but I recognise it's a planning exercise and we can't force doctor surgeries, schools and new sewers as part of this process. Might become something we can influence with the changes to local authorities coming, but that is an entirely different discussion. The point I want to raise again is space standards. I mentioned it right at the beginning, but forgot to keep on and on about it, so it slipped off the radar. I believe this is somewhere where we can actually use a planning system to make a positive change. We have references in there to the nationally described space standards, but bluntly, these standards are inadequate and they allow for rabbit hutches disguised as houses even before the increasing trend for homeworking. We have a duty as community representatives to make sure we're providing homes fit not just for living in but for thriving in. And anyone questioning the importance of this matter, there is really good evidence that improved space standards not only reduce antisocial behaviours and have a positive impact on crime rates, but also improve the health and wellbeing of residents, both of which have long-term reductions on the pressures on infrastructure. On the understanding we can still introduce conditions like one of the upgraded space standards, I'm more than willing to support these preferred options to go forward to consultation though.
Thank you, councillor Kirkby-Taylor. Karen, briefly?
Thank you. The space standards are, as you say, they're only optional and nationally prescribed. I take a different view to you actually because I actually think there is a place for smaller units, especially when we have the... for smaller units, especially when we have the housing crisis that we've got. I think people are better off in small self-contained units and they are sat in a bed and breakfast or a hotel room somewhere. So I think there is a place in appropriate circumstances, especially for temporary accommodation for some small units. But the policy does enable, that we've got in the plan, does enable us to take action when units are too small or there's overcrowding and that sort of thing. It allows the private sector housing team to take action under their legislation, but only if we have something in the local plan, if that makes sense, even though they're their standards rather than ours.
I think those debates about high density and space standards are going to be more and more acute as we go forward, but it's a good point well made. Thank you. councillor Smithson?
Thank you Chair. You'll be pleased to see my 54-page speech from this morning has been whittled down dramatically this evening. I'd also like to add my thanks to Karen and the other officers for all their hard work putting this together. They had to produce the several thousand pages of documents that we've all had to read and it has been a mammoth task. You're absolutely right, people don't all want to live in Tiptree. That's because the traffic's dire, there's no public transport and they can't get a doctor's appointment. There's no infrastructure. This plan does not support or show us how we will deliver the infrastructure we desperately need. We've reached a chicken and egg situation with infrastructure where we say we don't want to build it because we might not be in the right place and then we say, well, we don't want to build the houses because there's no infrastructure. We have to change something. The phrase 'build it and they will come' springs to mind. Page 12 of the draft local plan, which is page 61 of the meeting pack, sets out four planned themes and 12 delivery objectives. I don't think I can look a resident in the eye and tell them that this plan sufficiently delivers against those objectives. It doesn't improve existing facilities, it doesn't reduce congestion across the city as a whole, and I don't think it goes far enough on many, many areas. Putting that to the side for the minute, I have some very important questions and at one point I had about 50 and I've whittled it down, but you may still get an email with the other 47 later on. Where is the evidence that we can achieve a 40% to 50% modal transport shift, especially in rural wards? We all acknowledge there's no public transport, we acknowledge it's not safe to cycle or walk. How are we going to achieve that? A rapid transport system in the centre of Colchester does nothing for the wards outside of the CO1, CO2 postcodes. Two, what happens if the secretary of state for housing communities and local government calls in the Middlewick site? The MOD put it forward as they are able to do in the current iteration of the plan and she calls it in and they rule that it's going to be built upon. Does that increase Colchester's allocation by another thousand homes or will we simply be able to remove some from the iteration we've just come up with? And finally, what happens if local government reform proceeds, CCC is dissolved and a new unitary council is created? Will the plan have to be reviewed again? If it will, have we sought guidance on the implications for the existing plan? Will that still carry weight until the new plan is adopted? If yes, that's the case, how is that different to not completing this plan review by February next year? Thank you.
Thank you Reece. Karen?
Thank you. I'm going to ask Rachel about the modal shift point in a sec. In terms of Middlewick, there's a long process to go through. If someone wants to apply for planning permission on Middlewick, then they've got to pull the planning application together and all the various associated documents, submit it and it's got to be considered by this council. Then assuming we refuse it based on policy, the policy that's in the adopted plan and there's an appeal, again, another lengthy process. I'd like to think we get the draft plan in place that we're discussing tonight before that scenario occurred. It would certainly, the further along this plan is, the more weight it carries in decision-making in terms of prematurity. So there's that to take into account. Should it get to appeal and an inspector or the secretary of state decides that planning permission should be granted, then depending on where we are in the plan-making process for this plan, depends on whether those numbers can be taken into account or not. They will be taken into account in terms of delivery anyway, but if they come too late, then it may be that we can't take anything out or there's no desire to take anything out, even though we've ended up with a thousand we weren't expecting at Middlewick. So this comes back to my point about wanting certainty and planning ourselves for where development goes rather than relying on the planning inspectorate. And then in terms of local government reform, we're still going to need a plan for Colchester whether, whatever happens in terms of our boundaries and who we might be sharing a plan with. So my advice to you is that we get on and prepare a plan for Colchester which will set out where development should go over the next five, 10, 15 years. If others don't do that, then if I was a house builder thinking, oh, I want some more land, I know where I'd be looking and it wouldn't be Colchester if we'd got allocations and land designated for other purposes. I'd be looking at an area that hasn't got a local plan.
Thanks Karen. Rachel, do you want to address the modal shift point? Or Sandra?
I think I'm doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I've just lost the page in the document. The evidence to follow will provide more detail on the how. I think the work that's gone to date has identified that through the achieving that, that how that will help address the challenge and the capacity. The report does identify some measures that are ways to achieve that and the later evidence that is still to come to inform the consultation will include more detail on that and be more specific, including identifying the opportunities and the challenges that face the rural areas as well.
Thanks Sandra. Right, has everybody spoken? Second bite, Lewis, is it brief?
It is, thanks chairman. I think just putting up on Sandra's point just there is probably the crux of the issue some of us have this evening. I don't, I guess my central issue is what is the point in putting this out to consultation if there are constraints on the plan that we don't know for sure can be overcome? So we could consult on this plan, finish regulation 18 consultation, look at the infrastructure work and actually the barriers that are currently being identified as effectively making the proposals unsound. For example, the 40% to 50% modal shift, we might never be able to demonstrate that shift can occur. And as such, we would be back to square one having spent time delaying cost consulting on a plan that is never achievable. So I guess that's the central crux is if we're going to do that work, why not do it now? And let that inform the soundness of the plan at this point as much as possible, go to consultation, perhaps tweak it as a result, but we then will have the evidence based on the infrastructure audit and then the infrastructure delivery plan that actually this is, as confident as we can be at this stage, a sound plan. And I think that's the crux of the issue is that we're being told the evidence will come, but if that's the case, why not just do it now? And that gives us the reassurance that actually we're in as strong a position as possible. I appreciate we have to deliver these homes, I don't think any of us are questioning the volume of homes here because we realise we're constrained on that. It's just making sure we have the maximum possibility of a sound plan. And that certainty is good for the economy, communities, infrastructure, landowners, developers, and I'm worried we'll just get bogged down like we did with the Gardening communities where we didn't have that certainty, the plan was delayed at considerable cost to this council, the taxpayer. So that's a central question I haven't really had an answer to yet this evening.
I'd give Karen another bash at it.
You don't have to, it's more of a, I get your point of view, so you don't necessarily have to.
There's never a perfect time to make this decision, there'll always be questions in the air, but Karen, is there anything else you want to say on that?
Yeah, I guess I don't actually understand why we wouldn't go out to consultation at this stage, why we wouldn't progress for consultation at the same time as doing the evidence base. What harm is it going to do? That's what I'm not grasping, because what we'll actually gain is information from people which feeds into the evidence base. If we hold up the consultation, we revise the evidence, we then consult, we get feedback and then we revise the evidence yet again. So I'm missing something, I think.
I think that's the advice from our professional officers. councillor Parsons?
Thank you Chair. 30 seconds. In my mind, what is fatal to the plan is that we cannot provide the water supply. What our evidence base says is that the Colchester area goes into water deficit this year. If we can't supply water, the plan fails.
I don't think that's the case, is it?
No, no, and when we're getting back to the same point, that's an interim report and there's more to come on the modelling. And I just wanted to add another point with regard to the actual requirement of the regulation at regulation 18. The plan before you covers far more detail than the regulations require us to do so. It could be a far more sketchy plan with far less evidence than we have available to date. So in terms of what we're required to do at this stage in the process, we've actually gone way, way beyond the minimum with the idea that it will help you inform. The time when you need to be certain of your soundness is at regulation 19 and this stage helps us get there.
Thank you Sandra. As the officers have said, this is a staging post and what is the harm of going out to consultation at this stage? So I'm going to move the recommendations that are set out, but I will read them out for the benefit of the public. To agree to the content of the preferred options Colchester local plan regulation 18 is appended to this report as appendix B. To agree to the publication of the preferred options Colchester local plan for consultation for a period of six weeks to commence soon as reasonably practical following the committee. To note the publication of the evidence documents listed and summarised in this report. And I'm going to make a slight amendment to 2.4, which is for the committee to delegate authority to head of planning and the chair of local plan committee in consultation with the group spokesperson, I'd like that added. Got that Rob? To make minor revisions to the preferred options Colchester local plan, including the policies maps prior to publication. Can I see all those in favour? Oh yeah, I do need a second there. Someone second that proposal? Thank you Fay. Can I see all those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five. Five.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, six.
So that's lost. Is there an alternative recommendation? There has to be an alternative recommendation because we can't leave ourselves without a local plan. I will read you what 4.1 says. The committee could decide to make changes to preferred options local plan to delay publication of the plan or not proceed with this stage of plan-making, if that's what you want, a delay or not proceed. However, all these alternative options are likely to leave the council in a vulnerable position going forward with no clear steer for future growth and development because the existing local plan policies will become out of date. The absence of an up-to-date plan makes the council vulnerable to speculative development and undermines development management decision-making. It could also lead to government intervention. So what is your alternative recommendation? Does somebody have one? councillor Ellis?
I think I said when I spoke earlier chairman, that I wanted to see the delivery plan, infrastructure delivery plan. If that's something that Karen doesn't feel that we can get, then we're going to have a problem personally.
That's not a recommendation. We need a recommendation tonight.
So I'll recommend that we postpone making this decision and taking it out to council, taking it out to consultation and it coming back to committee until we've got stage four of the infrastructure audit, which is completed, which is the delivery plan. I'd like to have costings for all of the infrastructure items, as pointed out, some of those are missing. A credible plan for delivery, whether through developer contributions, utilising or utility suppliers, central government and a contingency plan.
How long is that going to take officers?
Hang on.
Are you carrying, have you got more?
Yeah, I'm going to carry on and a contingency plan of no link road A12 or A120. A120, I understand we might not have. I do want to know what we're going to do, we don't have, as I said, I've got 20, 23%, 27% of the plan is predicated on something at Markstay which is dependent on the A12. If that doesn't happen, actually it's going to cause a big issue for the plan, I believe.
How long is all that work going to take?
Sorry, I need someone's, Andrew. Months. So what I will need to do, if that recommendation is passed, is, Robert will have to advise me, because we need to publish an up-to-date LDS scheme by the 6th of March. So we need an extra meeting somehow between now and the 6th of March to enable us to do that, because if this is going to take, well, it is going to take a few months at least, I'm not over-exaggerating it, particularly in relation to national highways, so.
Okay, so the position we're finding ourselves in is we'll need another meeting and then the work will take months and that of course will be done after the annual meeting of the council, so we could get a totally different membership of this local plan committee and they would have to then go into all that evidence that we have now assimilated over the year, over years. And it seems a very strange situation to me. I'm obviously going to put your recommendation to the committee, but Rob, have you any idea about when we could have another meeting, which I'm sure we're all looking forward to?
Thank you Chair. I'm afraid I don't have access to my calendar, I'm using a different computer tonight, so due to other technical issues which we won't go into, but it's, I couldn't tell you right now.
Okay, but it's the 18th, what is it today?
It's the 17th.
17th of February and we've got to have another meeting before that.
As you say, I might need to just wait for my colleague if I just speak to Rachel.
Okay, Richard is on his way, we just have to take a brief pause.
The advice is if we need to find one, we will get it in the diary, but we can't guarantee obviously there won't be an inconvenient date should members also, we can't confirm it tonight basically.
And why do we, sorry Karen, can you confirm why we need to have that meeting before the 6th of March?
Sorry, the government have required every council publish an up-to-date local development scheme by the 6th of March. Because ours was only revised in November last year, I considered it to be up-to-date, so it didn't need to come back to committee, it's already published, we met the requirement. But if we're not taking a decision tonight, it has implications which need to be reflected in the local development scheme.
Okay, so we will need a meeting before the 6th of March? Okay. You're sticking with your recommendation Andrew?
I certainly want to see the delivery plan part of the, as in a stage four of the audit, which is the delivery plan. How long is that going to take? Karen?
I'm just asking Sandra how it was timetabled in the commission because it's not us doing it, of course, it's consultants. What we would have to do then is base it on the sites in the local plan only and not do anything else. So we would assume the sites in the draft plan are the sites in the final plan to provide a robust infrastructure requirement for each site going forward.
The point is, sorry, the point is, I know you're asking why we shouldn't go out to consultation now. My view is if I've got to talk to parish councils and residents and what have you and explain to them and explain to them what this plan means and what it means for them, actually showing them that there are going to be some tangible benefits from growth in their areas, you need to show what infrastructure is going to be delivered. At the moment, you will get negative responses, I've had loads of them, obviously, what the hell are we getting all of this extra development for in our communities? We've done the hard yard, so to speak, and I'm thrilled that we've got, and I take my hat off to you, you went to the right people, you went to ACOM, that was discussion we had originally about the Essex infrastructure audit.
I think we're moving off the point of your recommendation Andrew.
I'm not, I'm trying to explain why, I'm trying to explain why I'm being annoying, which I'm sure I am. I'm trying to explain why I want that information, because I feel that informs the plan, it informs people as to why they should be supporting this.
But we're not going to get that before May, I don't think, are we? No, we're not going to get that, so that'd be down to a new committee to decide, and you all want to hand this potentially over to a brand-new committee to do. That is the essence of your recommendation. Councillor Barber, you want to come in?
I think we're sort of going a bit off tangent, and I think we should firm up the wording of Andrew's, councillor Ellis's proposal and then move to a vote on it. If we want then a subsequent discussion, so be it, but I think realistically it's a vote, isn't it?
Yeah, it does need a vote, and if that's lost, I don't, we'll have to look for another recommendation, because I think there's enormous holes in Andrew's recommendation. But if you could give your wording so that Rob can take note of it, Andrew please.
That's because we're coming up with it on the hoof, so to speak, chairman. So I'm asking for a postponement until we've got stage four of the infrastructure audit complete, which is the delivery plan. I'd asked for costings for the additional infrastructure items to be added in. If you look at the infrastructure delivery, you'll see that there are various lines where there is no infrastructure cost, including primary care, adult social care.
You're making it very difficult for Rob to note your, I'm asking for your recommendation, Andrew, I know it's difficult and you're doing it on the hoof.
I am, okay.
The committee needs to make a decision.
Okay, stage four of the infrastructure audit complete, the delivery plan. Costings for the infrastructure items that are missing. A credible plan for delivery, whether through developer contributions, utility suppliers or central government, and a contingency plan if there is no link road, A12 realignment or the A120 scheme.
Thank you, that's going to take months, so that will be in the new municipal year. Okay, and that puts us at risk of speculative development potentially Karen, would you could, could you answer that?
It does further down the line, because it pushes subsequent adoption way beyond February next year.
Thank you.
The other point is Middelwick remains in the plan.
Yeah, that's true.
With a robust policy of course, but I'm just going to...
That's a good point, Middelwick will remain in the plan. So Rob, have you got, have you got that?
I have that down chair.
Thank you, right, we're going to take a vote on that, I can't possibly vote for it. All those in favour of Andrew's? Oh yeah, need a seconder, we've got a seconder, have a Rhys here, all those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
And all those against? That's carried, so...
Was there any abstentions there?
Any abstentions, there was, councillor Kirkby-Taylor, thank you very much, the Middelwick campaigners will be delighted with that, I'm sure, when they get told about it. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight, and looks like we're going to have another meeting before the 6th of March, and then it will be down to the new local plan committee to take this forward. Thank you very much.